All right, Madam Secretary, are we almost ready? Almost? Stephen, Stephen, you're forty-five minutes early. Stephen, are we ready now? Okay. All right, I'd like to call and order the special city council meeting for September third, two thousand twenty-four, six o'clock PM. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
All right, next, please.
Item two, invocation given by Councilmember Allen Robbins, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the American and Texas flags.
Please raise.
He's about with me. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the rain. Please bless this meeting and let us conduct city business in a decent manner. I pray for protection over our first responders out there and how they take care of us and our city staff for taking care of our city. Can you name me pray? Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, next, next, please.
Agenda item three A, childhood cancer awareness month proclamation.
Allen?
Oh, this me?
Yeah, unless you wanted glasses.
Easy. All right, whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death and disease, my disease in children, one in two eighty-five children in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer before the age of twenty, and whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening, and whereas in the last thirty years, only seven new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer, and whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, and whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure, and whereas our community has the opportunity to join together to make a significant impact on the lives of children and families who have been touched by childhood cancer by joining to raise awareness for childhood cancer and encourage funding to find a cure. Now, therefore, David Billings, Mayor of the City of Fayette, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of September two thousand twenty-four as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Fayette, Texas, and encourage all citizens to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to raise awareness and support the cause that so deeply impacts families in every community.
Next, please.
Agenda item three B, Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation.
Okay, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a month-long celebration of Hispanic and Latino history and culture, and whereas Hispanic Heritage Month began a week-long celebration in nineteen sixty-eight, and President Johnson will expand it to a month-long celebration by President Ray Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to provide more time to properly recognize the significant contribution made by Hispanic Latino Americans, and whereas Hispanic Heritage Month does not cover one single month, but instead begins September fifteenth and ends on October fifteenth. Timeframe of this month is significant because many Central American countries celebrate their independence days with these dates. By laying these independence dates, Hispanic Heritage Month honors the resilience and determination of the Hispanic community, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to shine a spotlight on the unique voices and experiences of Hispanic Latino Americans and recognize their history, journeys, and achievements. Now, therefore, I, David Billings, the Mayor of Fayette, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do proclaim September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and the City of Fayette, Texas, encourage all residents to join and support the celebration of this month. Next, please.
Agenda item four, public comment. I have someone that wants to speak on an item not on the agenda, that being Patty Matlich, address two six seven Callahan Drive, would like to speak about forms.
Welcome.
I'm Patty Matlich, two six seven Calligan Drive, Fayette, Texas, seven five one eight nine. It's been a long time since I stood up here, well over a year, but I know some of you have missed me terribly. I am here to ask if there is another way, or if y'all can come up with a way, that people, when there's issues on the agenda, that they can either email you, like we used to be able to, and then all of a sudden we couldn't, or put out a drop box on the inside, the outside, somewhere that's locked, where people can fill out the forms in advance. From what I can see, it's going to be twenty-five years before thirty's ever finished. People can't get home. You know, they cannot be here, so you're not hearing by what few people we can get here by six o'clock to fill out forms. You're not hearing what the city has to say. There has got to be a way to do it, and you say back to me, you got to prove who you are. I have sent probably hundreds of emails to the City of Fayette. I have sent public request records. I've talked to the attorney, the prior attorney. I've talked to council members, asking questions. Not once in one email was I ever asked to verify that that was me behind the email. Not once, over four or five years. So y'all took it for granted. It was me. So there's got to be a way to do this and make it where people, I've had, I don't know how many people asked me over the last couple of days, why can't we do this so they can hear us? So that would ask that you please come up with a way, make it easier for all the citizens of Fayette to participate rather than just the ones that can get here at six o'clock. If you've ever worked out of town, like I did, for many years, my first years, I couldn't get here. I didn't even get off work until six o'clock in downtown Dallas, and then much less make it here at six. Most time I didn't leave there till seven or eight, so it was impossible. So y'all got to hear me whenever COVID started. So anyway, please consider that an idea and an option and a way to come up with something that people can fill out these forms in advance, put the item numbers what they want, and then let them be heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please. Quiet, please.
Next is Rodney Brumlow, address one oh two Jeremy Drive, wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda regarding restricting developer from renting houses.
Rod Brumlow, one oh two Jeremy Drive, Fayette. The other day, I saw, I think it was Rallette, there was a deal where they filed a proclamation restricting developers from building neighborhoods and renting houses. That's happening in Fayette. You're shaking your head no.
No, what I'm saying.
It's either Rallette or somebody.
Rallette did not pass an order.
Who was it?
Rallette passed a resolution to support government abbots.
Okay.
This is not a restraint, just make sure.
They did a proclamation in support of that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, is Fayette going to do it, or are they going to let developers keep shitting on them?
So first thing, this is a state issue, but now it's on the agenda coming up?
When?
Probably October first.
No, it needs to happen. Developers need to get the hell out of it, not rent houses.
Remember the, just, you know, it's corporations, not developers. It's.
Well, investment companies, you know, you know, the money people need to get out of it. It's making it, too many people in here already. You know my feelings about housing, and they don't need to be coming here and packing a bunch of rent houses into Fayette.
I get it, and so does the governor. Thank you.
I want to make sure you understand.
I understand. And so does the governor of Texas. Thank you. Next, please.
Also, Rodney Brumlow would like to speak about agenda item six A.
Just a no? Are you going to rush her just a no?
Yo, there's a deal that Mayor Billings posted, talking about between Hunts in the city of, you know, Walkway. It wasn't real clear. We looked up, pulled different deals where the city is making restitution or something. You know, what is that for, a walkway?
Yeah, let's do this. When we get to item six A, we'll have the staff address that issue, but you're talking about the Development Agreement, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we'll address that during the gin item for you. We'll address that during the gin item for you.
It needs to be explained a little bit better.
Absolutely, absolutely. I probably agree with you. All right, next, please. Rob, are you up the third time or not? Okay.
Yes, so Rodney Brumlow wants to speak during the posted public hearing on six B, so we'll hold on to that.
Okay.
And then I have, just one minute, I have twenty-eight people that do not want us to speak, but want their opposition on record for agenda item six A.
Okay.
And then I also have nineteen people that do not want to speak, but they want their opposition on record for agenda item six E, which is the adoption of the tax rate. And then I have other people that want to speak or want their opposition on record, but we'll do that during the public hearing for six B.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, Vicki?
I think that's it for right now, until the public hearing.
Okay. I've done with the public hearing?
I just had Ms. Yott hand me something. I have not read it. I don't know what it is, so if you want to allow me time to read it.
Yes, please.
Okay.
And what was it?
This is a letter talking about comments on the golf cart ordinance.
Okay.
Yes, so if you want me to, like, email this to you?
Yes, please, that'd be great.
I can scan it and email it to you?
Yes, please, if you don't mind. That'd be perfect, thank you. Appreciate that.
She, she sent me, or she dropped this off for me, and she wants me to read it for public comments.
We normally don't do that, so what we do is we'll have Vicki email to the council and all the council have it.
All right.
And it will go on the record.
And the minutes will reference that she dropped off a letter, and then it was emailed to the council so that it is reflected in the minutes that it was received.
All right, do we have anybody else, Vicki? Is that it?
No.
No, sir. The rest will be heard during a public comment on, for the public hearing on the zoning case.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Next, please.
Next, we will move to item five, consent agenda.
Okay, you have any question, comments on the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion that we pass the consent agenda.
Have a motion by account. I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
All right, please vote. Motion is passed at seven to zero. Next, please.
Next, we will move to agenda item six A, discuss, consider and take any necessary action regarding resolution number R two thousand twenty-four dash zero seven zero, approving a reimbursement and development agreement between the City of Fayette and Fayette I thirty Commercial LP for the Fayette Memorial Mixed Use Project located on the southeast corner of I thirty and Memorial Parkway.
Welcome, Ryan. And you heard the one question about the walkway.
Yes, I'll be happy to explain that more detail. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Ryan Wells. I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services. So this item is a proposed development agreement and reimbursement agreement for the project that will be up next as a zoning request, and there are two parts to this agreement. One is to basically contractualize or the building materials standards that were proposed as part of the planned development, but which legally can't be included in the ordinance per House Bill two thousand four thirty-nine. The state of Texas has made, prohibited the ability for cities to regulate building materials above and beyond what's authorized under the International Building Code or the International Residential Code. And so for any case where we want to have elevated building standards, those need to be incorporated into a contract between the city and a developer, and that's what this development agreement establishes. The second part of this is that in negotiations with the developer, as they were working on the project designed for the Memorial Mixed Use Project, they included a pretty significant pedestrian trail to be incorporated within the project that surrounds the floodplain area that kind of separates the northern commercial piece along I thirty from the southern commercial and entire residential piece. In order to improve the connectivity, should the project be approved, we are requiring a, an additional bridge connection between the northern and southern halves of that, of that trail, but because that's above and beyond what we normally could require, we agreed upon a fifty percent cost share of the as-constructed cost of only that section of trail connection, that bridge, and because the bridge crosses a hundred-year floodplain, there's a certain cost associated with that, much like we did with the developer who built the bridges across the floodplain over by the Wood Creek SFR project from Spring Meadow down to the city-owned park property north of downtown. This is just a way for us to incentivize that additional amenity and improve the connectivity of the trail system, again, if the project were to be approved. And so there's a cap of forty thousand dollars or fifty percent of the as-constructed cost of only that connection section, whichever is lesser. So that's what that reimbursement is. It doesn't pay for any other parts of the trail. It's only that connection. So hopefully that answers the gentleman's question and any questions you may have on this.
I have a question, Ryan, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I know this development agreement is contingent upon approval of item six B. So I think the first question I would have is why are we considering this before we would consider the approval of the property?
Sure.
And then, second off, what happens if this gets approved and the zoning doesn't get approved?
Right, so for the first one, we had internal discussions about what the appropriate order of things would be. If this is approved and the zoning isn't approved, then it really, no harm, no foul, and nothing's really done. Nothing's going to be built that establishes building materials requirements, or there's no, going to be no trail that, you know, needs a reimbursement. However, if the zoning were approved and then the development agreement came forward, there could be a far-fetched potential that that development agreement gets pushed to the side. We have an entitled property, but those elevated standards, the building material standards, don't exist, and we're stuck in a place where we might find a product that is less than what we would want to see as far as the quality of materials. So this is kind of like, if it's approved, great. If the zoning is not approved, then it doesn't really affect. then it doesn't really affect anything, but if the reverse happens and that development agreement isn't approved, but we have entitled property, you can find yourself in a, a challenging situation.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Seeing none, I will make a motion that we direct staff to prepare a revised ordinance between the City of Fate and Fate I-30 Commercial LP for the commercial subdivision at 28.90 acres excluding all multifamily residential housing. So the, the PD would be only for commercial development, only for 29.9 acres excluding all mu- mu- multi-family housing. I made that motion.
May- may- Mayor, uh, the item that is in front of you is the development agreement?
I know, that, that's why I'm changing the development agreement, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to, to change the development agreement, correct?
Yeah, this is related to the development agreement, so 6B is a public hearing for the zoning.
I know, but I wouldn't change the PD, so my motion is to change the development agreement first.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? So what we're gonna do is, we're doing something, we're gonna invite, come up with another PD, Plan Development Agreement in front of council, have staff re, you know, rewrite it with the standards in there for commercial development only excluding all multifamily, okay? And then, uh, if it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't, um, then we have to have another vote, and then we'll go to 6B and talk about the next steps there, okay? Any more, any discussion on this? What happened? Oh, motion passes, uh, five to two, with, uh, Councilman Robbins and Scott Kelly voting no. All right, next, please.
Next is Agenda Item 6B, this is an application for a zoning change request from agricultural to planned development for a horizontal mixed-use development. First will be applicant presentation, followed by staff summary, public hearing, and then ultimately consider action on ordinance 2024-049.
So Cynthia, I think what we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna go ahead and have the applicant, you know, the presentation, applicant presentation, the zoning hearing, right, the, the, the public hearing, the public needs to know that, there's another motion out there on, limiting the resi- the multifamily on that, and then when we get to the decision by what decide, what to do next? Do we table it, or we just vote it down? I mean, what we need to do, or only for, for the commercial part of it? Makes sense?
Yes.
All right, any objections from council? We have to go through the process, so we might just go do that. All right, uh, are you first, Ryan?
Applicant Presentation.
Sorry about that, I apologize, I thought you were second.
Well, hello everyone, Matthew Johnson, Petro Hunt, 2101 Cedar Springs Road, Dallas, Texas, Cedars, uh, excuse me, Cedar Springs Road, Dallas, Texas, 75201. And I'm also joined here by, uh, with our partners from Stillwater Capital and L.J. Engineering as well, so you'll hear from some of those shortly as well. Thank you, council members, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, uh, with you to discuss our development. We think we have a quality mixed-use project and are excited to present it to you all as well as the citizens of Fate. Want to also thank Ryan and the, and the planning, uh, team for their coordination and, uh, throughout the process, and appreciate their preparedness for this evening. Uh, I'd wanted to state for the record that we've reviewed, uh, staffs and PNZ's, uh, conditions of approval and are accepting of them. And I've been to council, uh, a number of times before, uh, but wanted to take, I know there's some new members and some new members in the audience, or some new citizens in the audience tonight as well, so I wanted to take an opportunity to, uh, just introduce ourselves for a few minutes prior to jumping into the presentation. So the Petro Hunt Organization is a family office for the Herbert Hunt Trust and members of his family. Petro Hunt has owned property in Fate since 2004, so we have 20 years of presence in the community, and we've been developing properties for over 50 years throughout the metroplex. Our firm's approach in Fate has been as a land developer, we've been master planning the land uses across our property, installing horizontal infrastructure, uh, in preparation of development, and working with quality developers and operators to bring their developments and businesses to Fate. Our land development goal is to, to match the right uses at the right location, at the right timing, to make a, to work together as a system and provide a thriving community. Our firm's model and capital structure allows us to maintain a long-term focus on pursuing quality development. As landowner of adjacent properties to the one, uh, being reviewed tonight, we have a vested interest in the long-term success of the developments we bring forth and the, the, the other developers and operators that we, we partner with. We believe we've established a track record of quality partnerships and developments to date. Our land development work has included involvement in many quality projects such as the Fresh Bright Brookshires, Fate Village, uh, the ongoing development of the northeast corner of William, uh, William and Crawford and, and I-30, including the Stags and Specs and Autozone, uh, and we're working on some additional development in the pipeline over there as well. We've been involved in Volkswagen of Rockwall County, the Light Bridge Academy that's recently broken ground, uh, at 551 and, and Chamberlain. And we've got a number of other properties that are, uh, commercial properties in the pipeline that are in process with, with planning currently. Also, over the past few years, Petro Hunt has invested over $13 million in roads and infrastructure, uh, surrounding our property, and dedicated over seven acres of land to the City of Fate for public right-of-way to accommodate and in preparation for future development. These investments have resulted in, in new roads such as Greenbrier and Fate Village over 1.7 miles of public right-of-way, and upwards of two and a half, over, excuse me, just over two miles of sidewalks and trails. So we feel that these projects have contributed positively to the growth of the community, and we look forward to participating in the future of the town. So with that, I'll kind of start to run through the, um, the development itself, so. Petro Hunt brought a previous zoning case forward in 2023 that included a portion of this land. While that previous zoning case was ultimately denied at City Council, that process further informed us about how the Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council, and the citizens of Fate saw this property and what would constitute a more successful mixed-use development for all stakeholders. We are happy to be here tonight to share the outcomes of that evaluation process for the development. Our goal in this submission was to bring forward a plan and design for the development that better aligned with what we heard in the past zoning case, the vision of Fate's comprehensive plan, and what we believe will be the best use for this portion of the property. As we revisit the conceptual design of the development, our group wanted to make sure we highlighted a couple of things, that we fully depicted the superior quality of the residential components of this project. We addressed potential traffic-related concerns and impacts from the development. We conceptualized the balance of the commercial, um, property, and we provided a framework for a development agreement that memorialized our commitment to the quality for the project and the use of premium materials for, for construction. So as we review the project tonight, we will highlight the updates and enhancements made to our plan, including the increased size and scope of the commercial retail portion of the project, including planning an additional 100,000 square feet of retail commercial space, the addition of a traffic mitigation plan through the interior portions of our property, and updated building types and designs for the residential components. So with that, I'll kind of turn it over to here to the area overview to give everybody a chance to orient themselves to the location of the project. So we're at the 49 acres at the southeast corner of Memorial and I-30. As you can see, a couple of things I want to highlight, we are the property owner to the, the property directly to the south of Greenbrier. We currently are in process of developing a couple of commercial opportunities there on the frontage, including Light Bridge Academy and another, uh, development in process. Also wanted to highlight, uh, maybe you guys, some of you driven by recently in solid Greenbrier Road West, we've actually paved just this past week, uh, what's called Stations 10 through 19, which provides, uh, the rest of the street right-of-way out to the I-30 access road. We're finalizing, coordinating with TechStot on getting approvals to pave the turn lane and hope, hope to have, um, the road operational within the next 30 to 60 days, so. Excited about that, and then also, uh, wanted to draw attention to a number of commercial developments that we have, um, along the frontage road there, uh, just west of Fate Village as well. So as you can see, we're pretty active, uh, on this property as well as, as our adjacent Couple of things I wanted to highlight, we've put together an illustrative site plan that shows, uh, the entirety of the 49 acres, and wanted to just, uh, go over a few key features, um, that we wanted to highlight. So the first, kind of the anchor portion of this property is the, um, central lawn area, so it's a portion of, uh, a retail open-air lifestyle center that's, uh, approximately 48, 47,000 square feet of retail and hopefully restaurant space. Um, it's centered around the central lawn, which is about three-quarters of an acre, so pretty expansive, about the length of a football field. Uh, we've tried to, uh, provide a lush setting, full landscape, an opportunity where folks could, uh, congregate throughout their shopping experience and dining experience in, in the facility. Uh, the next portion to highlight is the urban street. So really, the, the development itself, uh, on the south portion is, is anchored by this urban street, it integrates the commercial piece with the residential area. Uh, it's got a number of streetscape enhancements, including, uh, paving, street trees, parallel parking, makes it a more intimate kind of setting for, um, connecting that retail portion, uh, to the, the residential portions, could be very active with the number of walkers, plan some type of restaurant patio experiences to be on that, uh, side of the facility. Uh, then at the, the trailhead, uh, from the public trail would also connect up here, uh, so there'd be a nice opportunity for some type of premium restaurant location up there at the, at the trailhead, at the convergence of the, the urban street as well as the trail itself. Uh, another thing to highlight is the expansion of the public trail, so we would be connecting into the trailhead that comes from, um, the Reserve at Chamberlain. Um, this then would provide a continuous trail and pathway all the way from Blackland all the way around, all the way to 551, all the way up to the planned commercial along the, the frontage there, so it's actually over 3,800 feet of additional eight-foot And then one other thing to highlight is we've tried to, um, taper the intensity of the residential uses, um, the most intensive uses being along that, uh, urban street, and then, uh, tapering down as you reach the Reserve of Chamberlain there on the eastern boundary, those would be, uh, two-story townhomes. So we feel it's a good, uh, tapering of, of the intensity as, as you move towards the existing residential neighborhoods. Uh, one other thing I just wanted to highlight, just showing this on the illustrative plan, I think it shows better than just in the concept plan that, that's provided, kind of in the, in the standard, um, package that's submitted for, for zoning cases, is just our commitment to landscaping. You know, one thing to highlight is, is the city's ordinance requires, which is, it's a good, it's a good requirement, or it's like, it's a good standard, is they require 10% of that area to be landscaped. Our project here is actually over double that, at 22% of the, the, the area being, um, landscaped. So we try to be, and we also try to be, uh, thoughtful about how we integrate the natural settings of the, of the, the wetlands and the creek into the project itself. And then one of the other items to highlight is the addition of, uh, internal access from all parts of the project out to the internal, uh, or out to the I-30 frontage road. So partic- this provides particularly for those folks that may be traveling eastward to be able to get eastward without ever even exiting onto an existing public right-of-way, particularly 551. And we have, we have a plan later that'll, that'll kind of detail, show what we would commit to building, uh, from the outset to accommodate that. So a couple, a couple renderings to, to show what these particular environments, uh, are planned to be, right? So these are two scale, uh, this would be the central lawn area looking from the south portion with your back to 551, looking out towards, call it the urban street and the residential setting. So all of the retail shopping experiences, the entry points, would be oriented towards the central, central lawn area, providing kind of a, a nice setting, uh, free of vehicular traffic so that folks could, uh, mingle and spend time, um, in that setting or traveling between shops as a pedestrian. Uh, this is a, a shot of the urban street, so this would be looking from the vantage point of being at, at the south end of the street with your back towards Greenbrier, out looking towards where the trail connection is, so you've got, uh, a number of opportunities here to, uh, again, have a patio or some type of outdoor dining experience alongside, uh, you know, folks that are, that are walking along the street. And in the background, you can see also that kind of premium restaurant site that sets up against the creek and meets at the convergence trailhead. And then on the, uh, the right side, this building, uh, and the regis- of the residential, um, use would feature the live-work units that would then, um, have their entry points at the street level from this street experience. And then as I mentioned, this would be what we are calling our traffic, traffic relief, uh, plan. We would commit to building this part of the accessway to provide access from the residential use and from, all the way from Greenbrier out to the I-30 frontage, um, as we commence the, the construction process for any of the residential, and we'd have to have it complete prior to, um, the certificate of occupancy for the first 100 units. So I think our intent would just be to do it right away. And then one of the things, as we were planning this, that we thought was a unique opportunity, um, we, we've had good luck with, with traffic movement, with the, with the use of the roundabouts, and, and it provided an opportunity here. Uh, we thought that there was a nice, um, potential for, uh, monumentation or enhanced landscaping on this to make it a, a nice feature of the property. I think as we were showing a number of concepts of what some types of monuments of this scale could look like, we would certainly, as we got through the development, be going into a process to, um, you know, figure out the, the, the marketing side of the, the, the development to, to then pick something that, that made sense for the city as well as for the development itself. Couple of things I did want to highlight that kind of glanced glossed over, but wanted to make sure I kind of touched on. We think some of the highlights of the development itself, particularly on the commerce side, is, is we're really trying to create new opportunities for commerce here in Fate. This project would entitle 148,000 rentable square feet of new commercial retail space that would supri- support a variety of commercial and retail functions that aren't necessarily currently here today, but I think there is demand for, and we're certainly seeing that demand as we're working through this process. There's a number of interested parties in what we're showing, and we, we're, we're working towards those use types within this plan, and, uh, they're not necessarily represented in Fate currently. And we think this would provide that opportunity to reduce that leakage that's occurring, those activities occurring in other communities surrounding. O- one thing I did want to highlight too, is just like, currently Fate has about 10 or 11 square feet per person of retail per capita, which is well below, kind of, Rockwall County is at 34 square feet per capita, national average is more like 50 square feet per capita, so you're, you're in that trade area, but like, the opportunity is there, the demand is there, like, this retail capacity will be taken up pretty quickly. There's an oper- there's a demand that will drive this space being taken up quickly. And we think, in, in looking at the estimates of what you could conceptualize a project this, uh, size and magnitude between sales tax revenue and, and, uh, the tax increment on the ad valour side, you're looking at nearly seven, seven figures, a million dollars in annual contribution to, um, the City of Fate. And the other thing I wanted to highlight, just kind of make sure it came through, was just our commitment to the quality of this project, right? I noted the landscape portion of it, we are... We are over two times the amount of landscape required. We think that creates a nice environment, a lasting environment, one that stands the test of time as it matures and grows. And so we're committed to doing that. The trail system itself, we're really committed to the pedestrian connectivity that Fayette is looking for. And we'd be putting in thirty-eight hundred linear feet of new trail, which is almost, you know, it's three-quarters of a mile. And we, again, the development agreement that was discussed previously, we're willing, we were willing to stand by what we were showing in the pictures, and even then some, and providing a product that goes above and beyond, and committing ourselves to building a product that we think is a superior one than what's been done in the market to date, and would be a very quality-lasting project. So I wanted to turn it over to our partners at Stillwater. I mean, as we, as we thought about who could execute and deliver on this in partnership with us, they came to mind early. I know that he's going to go through his, his kind of, his team's platform and background, but they would provide a quality project here that would be well received.
Hey, just real quick, you guys want to ask questions now, or you want to wait till the end of it?
I'm happy to come back after we.
You guys wait, wait, wait. Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Welcome.
Thanks. Good evening, council, mayor, staff. I'm Logan O'Neil, twenty-five fifteen McKinney Avenue, Dallas, Texas. I work at Stillwater Capital, a Dallas-based mixed-use and residential developer. We've had the pleasure of partnering with the Petroant team when looking at this site. As Matt mentioned, they brought us in once because the city's comprehensive plan, as well as feedback through other public hearings, required a more urban mixed-use project for this site. Stillwater has extensive experience in that space with over three-point-five billion dollars in projects across the United States, illustrated are DFW projects. And we're hopeful that we could add Fayette to this list. As Matt mentioned, in order to create a true urban mixed-use active environment, we wanted to make sure we had a great pedestrian experience. We did that using both the trail that's been highlighted, and will be discussed further in the staff report, the pedestrian trail, as well as this urban street that connects the residential and commercial uses. We've utilized enhanced hardscape as well as ground floor live-work units that mirror the commercial development and will allow for one consistent cohesive project as well as encouraging pedestrian activity in this streetscape. One item that consistently came up through former public hearings was the emphasis on quality. Matt also mentioned this. So with the help of staff and based on feedback we've received from council, we've drafted a development agreement which creates enforceable architectural and design and quality standards that ensure that the project that we are proposing is the only thing that can be developed. And it goes above and beyond existing development agreements that have been accepted to date in the city of Fayette. Attached are some representative images of the programming we intend to bring into the residential development. There's nothing that, in the market to date, that comes close to the level of finish quality and immunity programming that we intend to provide. These images are example of how we will be better than anything that exists in the current market and how our developments continue to receive rent premiums above and beyond our competitors in various markets. One of the biggest concerns we heard consistently throughout the public hearing process are the traffic issues. Everyone knows and admits that there are traffic problems on Memorial adjacent to this project to date. That being said, there are currently massive infrastructure projects that are underway that are designed to not only address the current problems, but as well as accommodate for future projects such as this. This is a high-level overview of the thoroughfare plan in the area as well as the respective timeline of various improvements. As you can see, based on our projected construction dates, occupancy dates, and completion dates, the traffic patterns for the city of Fayette as a whole will be vastly different from what they are today. And for thousands of Fayette residents, there's going to be better, more convenient options than accessing thirty through Memorial. We've studied this area extensively, and our traffic engineers are available to ask, answer any specific questions. And we've also performed a full TIA, could speak to that in detail as needed. This is the highlighted full build-out at Memorial adjacent to this property. As you can see, there's a major improvement from what it is today from a safety standpoint as well as from a traffic standpoint. And this is designed to accommodate traffic today as well as future growth. With that, that's our presentation, and we are available for any specific questions.
Courtney, you want to start the questions? Harry?
How many proposed, I don't know which one of y'all, but how many proposed apartments would this include?
It is specifically limited by the development agreement, and it's around three, well, the traditional apartment is around three-fifty. There's around twenty-one live-work units and thirteen townhomes, I believe are the exact count. Twenty-one townhomes and thirteen live-work units, excuse me. Yeah, flipped.
How, I guess my question may be for you, but it may be for David as well. How does our previous vote impact this specifically as far as the apartments go?
Yeah, let's get through, let's get to this, the public hearing, then we'll have a conversation with attorney, absolutely. Any more questions, Courtney? Mark?
Yeah, I have one question for Matt. I understand you were talking about the landscaping, and I just saw your thing that you're building wipe out a whole line of trees that weren't even part of the development. And I'm wondering why, why that happened as part of a development behind your property there on the lighthouse.
Oh, on the property to the south?
Yes.
That was in regards to the drainage easement that's existing. We had to, and this may be a better question for staff and staff's engineering team, but it was at the request of the city's engineer. As we were cleaning up the drainage channel, they requested that we expand the drainage channel that is existing there, call it from the southeast side to running into the existing pond as well. They made that a condition of approval.
Okay. And how many of the trees that are there existing on this property that you're asking for approval are you planning on removing from that area? Because a lot of that's floodplain as well.
There is a tree preservation plan that was submitted as part of the PD as well. I don't know the exact number offhand of what would be saved and removed, but there's a substantial amount that were intended to be saved with the amount that are in the wetlands.
Okay. That's all I have for now, thanks.
Scott?
So a couple of questions. First off, kind of just financially based. We've seen a lot of developments proposed over the last several years. And at least initially, they always start off with a component of multifamily to it. I know there's a level of value that that provides to the developer in terms of what you can extract. But as we look at a development like this, how does the multifamily increase the value of the rest of the development? How does that work percentage-wise? What? Just kind of walk me through that.
Yeah, the ad valorem is the outside, just where they, Rockwall County or any of the appraisal districts are appraising those, just given the density that you're getting on that property, it's driven by that.
So if the, so if we were to look at this as sub-districts of commercial versus multifamily, from a, not even from a tax perspective, from a market perspective, per square foot, is the multifamily priced at higher rates? Is it going to go at a higher rate?
It's a higher per square foot value, and the square footage is going to be larger.
So there is more value for you guys?
There's more value on the ad valorem side, but on the sales tax side, it's going to be not available to it.
Next question I have has to do with capacity. Today, we have twenty-one hundred and fifty entitled multifamily units with probably another two or three hundred worth of other denser-type housing options. From your analysis, what is the capacity available within the city?
Sure, I'll ask Logan to answer that. They're doing the more of the underwriting on the multifamily side, so.
Logan O'Neil, I would say, long-term, the reality of that number of entitled units, those are not all and cannot be built today, right? So I think a vast majority of those units that are entitled are part of a big master plan development that has years of infrastructure that hasn't started, that needs to go in before you're going to touch any of those. So I would say, today, there's not capacity in the city of Fayette for two thousand units, right? If you went and built two thousand units today, they would get absorbed over a few years, you know? I think the city has capacity for a few projects of this scale on the residential side specifically today. As you've seen across the street, you know, where you've had one project absorbed over a normal timeline. It's going to be for a large apartment complex, it's going to be absorbed over a little bit, over a year, with the next phase and lease-up. By the time we're delivering this, which, from what I can see from the rest of the developments and entitled units, this would most likely be the next project to be developed, in my opinion. So at that point, there would be outsized demand based on the timeline we're showing, we think. And there would be room for multiple projects to be absorbed at that time. But the reality is, across the highway, part of that mixed-use development, you wouldn't build multiple, that owner would not build multiple phases at a given time. And we think that the project that we're proposing here is a totally different living experience from what's being shown anywhere else in the city. So there would be outsized demand for residents to live here, even if there's more conventional multifamily or conventional units available being built on the north of thirty.
So what I'm hearing, part of that, part of what I'm hearing is y'all want to get, kind of get this going first before the other units get in. Is that fair?
No, I just, I think that this is a really special project. And we're, we think we've presented something amazing, it's well-thought-out. It is, it comes with a fully-vetted concept plan, right? From what I've seen, for everything north of thirty, it is more conceptual. Infrastructure is not there, ready to go today, right? So I think this, I think the timeline on this, although it's not entitled, would be sooner than those units. And then the second part of that is, I think, given, the same with any big project, you just don't, you just don't go build it all at once, right? So I think that if this project was going simultaneously with thirty, I think you have enough capacity or enough demand for two of these residential developments, because there's, let's say, four phases of residential in that project. One phase of that with one phase of this would be absorbed. I don't think you would realistically see multiple phases of apartments being built at one time across the street. It just wouldn't make sense.
Next question probably for Matt. There is acreage south of Greenbrier that you guys own now. And part of my concern with where we're at now is, as I look at this, where you've got the multifamily, I look at the property south, and it seems like it's a perfect place just for a secondary type unit for this. What's the plan for that piece of property?
Right now, it's considered a reserve tract. Any future planning of any use type would, you know, require us going through a full public hearing process and zoning process just like this. It's currently an ag. So anything that we would want to do on the property, we'd have to seek approval to do. Now, if Google calls and they said, hey, we want this to be our new innovation campus, it's probably going to be the innovation campus, you know? But like, it is a reserve tract, it's part of the planning process as we think through demand as these projects uptake on other sites.
Okay. The only other concern I'll throw out now, and surely not a way to address it, but the way you've got traffic routed through the property is a relief valve just seems extremely problematic because you're pushing traffic basically through a parking lot. And just using a parking lot as a roadway is going to be problematic. And it really doesn't seem to help the road issue. I know there are discussions underway and some work underway for expanding 551, but that's in the very early stages, it's not even on the calendar to be built yet. So the state hadn't committed the funding, so we're optimistic it'll happen in twenty-eight. It may or may not happen with what's going on with the economy. So all we know that's out there, I'm not optimistic that it will be done at any time. I can't count on the road being done before the project's being done. So I've got to factor that in, so that's all I have.
What changes, if any, are Greenbrier east of Memorial to that road in regards to this? I mean, it's right now.
I didn't hear the first part, what changes have they?
Yeah, are there any changes to Greenbrier east of Memorial?
No, other than the curb cuts, that would be part of the property itself. There won't be any on-street parking, that's public right-of-way. So I mean, it's the city of Fayette now as far as who can do what with it. We don't have to get approval to get any curb cuts, and they'd be as shown.
Saw the detail from Memorial, but I didn't see any detail for the entrances and exits on Greenbrier, if there's any D cell lanes or anything like that.
They're not required because of the traffic volumes and the speed limits that were on there. So they weren't currently contemplated.
And which direction are the townhomes facing? According, looking at the picture, you had front doors with front yards, but overview shows parking lot.
So the orientation of these would be towards the rear fence line.
So this is the back of the townhomes you're showing here?
It would be the front entry point. I think they all have tuck-in garages. So the tuck-in garages would be accessible from within the residential community. So their visitors could utilize the pathways that are there available from visitor parking, and then their front entry would be that.
Okay, so the front entrance face, facing the existing residential?
That's right.
Okay.
As shown.
And then live-to-work space, the thing that I have a problem with live-to-work space is that once people live there, they rarely work there. How, what plans, if any, do you have to help make that a viable commercial space as well?
Yeah, I'll ask Logan, it'll be their process, so I'm asking him to.
Just stand up there.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Really, it would be reserving those units for people that can prove that they have legitimate businesses, is how we've done in the past. You know, that does become a little bit, it can become problematic if someone does have a business, and then, hey, how do you show that they're actually using it, right? I think we're using our best judgment in that. But it would be, those units would be reserved for someone that truly does have a business and works from home and can validate, verify that.
And I'm assuming, I assume there's a list of allowable uses for that space in our UDO? The wetland area, is that going to plan to hold any water, if it has a water feature, or is it just going to be strictly drainage?
The existing detention pond, it's designed for the entire drainage basin, and at points holds, it's a detention, not retention. So it would not be utilized for retention and water feature.
Okay. I don't know, has Texas not accepted the plans for 551 yet?
They have not.
They have not?
But we're hoping they eventually will.
Are we optimistic, or we think they're going to come back with a bunch of changes to it?
We're optimistic.
Okay.
I'm optimistic that this portion of it's pretty sad.
Well, I mean, a lot of that also just.
Driveways are pretty good about driveways, but.
Yeah, that construction schedule is what I'm concerned about. Then what, you know, I appreciate the addition of all the commercial spaces. What drives, you know, what drives the final development of that, of those commercial pad sites?
Demand, and we see a lot of demand right now, but a lot of demand right now is, call me when you get in. Demand, and we see a lot of demand right now, but a lot of demand right now is, call me when you get entitlements, I'm a national retailer and I have X store count to hit, and you guys have got denied zoning twice, so I don't wanna waste a lot of time doing a bunch of diligence. Well, that occurs, but there's a number of users that are interested in acquiring, and we've designed spaces that reflect their needs. And so, a lot of the uptake will be accounted for in the nearest term.
And so, your plan to marketing this commercial space is gonna, is fairly active, or is it?
Yeah, I think on the pad sites and the commercial frontage along the north, there's individual users that are interested, as shown. And there's excess demand for the QSR-type spaces. The retail space that is surrounding the central lawn at the southwest corner, that is a little more specialized, given the quantity of it and the size and spaces. There'll need to be a pre-leasing effort where there's kind of a joint leasing effort, so that folks are going into a well-occupied center.
This might be a question for Logan, how, in your, in your experience, you know, all this commercial space is great, all the square footage is great, and it's a lot. They're gonna have to have workers. Where do these workers typically come from? How far are they willing to travel to be employed here? Someplace like this?
Are you talking about during the construction process?
No, like, the business is open up, they're ready to go, they need employees, it's hard to find employees right now.
Yeah. Definitely depends on the user, you know? I would say, if we're looking at the uses at around Central Lawn, you're looking at more F and B-type, maybe some fitness studios. Usually, those people live in the city. And it's shorter commutes, and there, you know, there's a yoga studio in every city, they're gonna work at the one that's convenient to them. And then, as you get, maybe with some of the other bigger box uses, could be a little bit farther. But in general, I mean, a lot of this, it's people that live in the city and work in the city.
Because a lot of our discussions have been about, you know, you know, price per square foot, or leasing per square foot of the residential areas, tend to price people out of the minimum wage plus tips style jobs. So, you know, it's, I have a concern about, you know, rent is high right now across the nation, for whether it's single-family homes or apartments. And I'm concerned about having all this retail space and not having a workforce to support it, because we tend to price ourselves out of housing that people can afford.
Yeah, no, understood. And I mean, we candidly are designing for this, the residential project, from what we can see is above and beyond what exists today. So we would expect it to rent for a premium relative to the other options that are in the market today. The only thing I would say is, something we've done in the past, when we do have kind of captive workforce adjacent, we're building a more active mixed-use environments, pedestrian environments like this, is rental agreements with those users, right? Because it helps us to have higher occupancy at all times. And if we know that there's, you know, X restaurant that has a bunch of young workers that are renters, and at any given time, there's five renters that live in our apartment, well, it's worthwhile to have them living next door, right? It's convenient, so we can offer rent discounts, and we've done that in urban environments before, whenever we have employers or users, you know, that have multiple residents living in our, multiple workers living in our projects.
My last question would be, according to the traffic study I saw, the commercial's gonna generate three and a half times that of the residential, as far as traffic goes?
And that's typical of any, any commercial development in contrast to a residential. You're planning for more parking, right? You're parking a commercial project at eight to ten parking spaces per square foot. And, you know, at eight to ten units per thousand square feet, and a residential's gonna be somewhere closer to one and a half per thousand square feet. So, you're just expecting more.
Yeah, I was just pointing that out, 'cause there's a, there's a lot of comments about, you know, the residential multifamily bringing, you know, increasing traffic when it's actually the other way around.
It is the other way around.
Significantly more traffic. The diagram you showed of Memorial and thirty, is that something that you guys are gonna build, or is that something that you're hoping Techstart will put into their final plans that they approve?
This diagram?
This one here, yes.
So, our traffic, our proposal and our TIA included our recommended improvements as the turn lanes. We have already installed the signal infrastructure. It is just dependent on a warrant study, Techstart's approval of it. So, we've done that, we would be installing that internal drive, we'd be installing, I don't believe this actual diagram shows the turn lane off of the thirty access road, but there'd be a turn lane, D cell lane there as well.
Okay. Thanks, thank you.
I'm gonna say another question. I was curious, I guess, how did you come up with the ratio of three hundred plus multifamilies versus the commercial this time? Was there a particular formula you came up with?
As far as ratio for, which ratio is that?
The three hundred multifamilies.
The unit count themselves? It's, you can answer, it's really, you know, the size and scale of the project, though, and reasonable densities that are kind of utilized across the industry that are within the development.
Okay, and on the traffic?
And I would say this, too, like, there is a size and scale of a multifamily development that allows it to be an institutional-level development, where it can have onsite property management, it can be managed, it gets institutional capital investors behind it, where you're at a higher level of quality than some smaller ones can support.
Okay, and when you were talking about traffic, and you were saying that the commercial brings in more traffic, is that more structured basically around business hours, which generally start later than people would say take off to go to downtown Dallas to go work?
I think that the TIA would represent that the peak hour traffics are somewhat different, but.
It'll be different than the residential, the residential would be probably more.
Our traffic expert is here, if you wanna ask him about.
On that, I was curious, I mean, it seemed to me that, you know, business hours for retail tend to be around ten or eleven to, I don't know, eight, nine, ten, it depends on the city.
Yeah, you're getting excess traffic, and it depends on the use type, right? Starbucks is going to get a lot of traffic in the AM hours versus a title company or whoever.
McDonald's, yeah, McDonald's. We were there, we waited forever the other day at nine AM.
So, I mean, generally, these are, they're planned for known values that can be expected across these.
So it's kind of a different kind of traffic, it's a different structure.
Could be, it just depends on the end-up uses that end up being there.
Okay.
You wanna answer that?
I'd love to. Scott Booth with LJ Engineering. The office is at our Dallas office, sixty-sixty North Central Expressway, zip code seven-five-two-zero-six. In answer to your question, so, commercial versus residential versus multifamily, commercial generates more, not only during the peak hour, particularly the PM peak hour. AM peak hour is not as big of a generator for a lot of commercial. When you're looking at the normal commuter time, a lot of those businesses don't open until nine o'clock. And so, there's not a lot of customers that are coming in. But that afternoon peak hour of, you know, say, four-thirty to six-thirty, there's significantly more traffic related to commercial. And commercial also generates a lot more on a daily basis than does residential. Residential, the traffic is focused around AM, when people are leaving their house to go to work, and then the PM, when they're coming home to go to, coming home from work. But a commercial development will actually generate traffic throughout the entirety of the day. And so, it's a much more intense use compared to residential.
Would that work in a city like Fates, where the vast, the vast majority of people make their livings outside the City of Fate? They're pretty much gone during business hours, between, say, eight in the morning to six, five or six at night.
Well, what I will tell you is, we utilize data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They have a very large book that has gone over the years, has collected data from different developments. And they have that all in a chart for us, and that helps us determine what the average is. We can look at it from the perspective of, is it more suburban, is it more urban? In this case, we are looking at it based on a suburban-type environment, and these are the numbers that we are seeing projected from the manual. Are they gonna be exact? No, but we found that it is a pretty good approximation based on almost thirty years of data that they've collected.
Okay, thank you. Lance?
Sure. Hey, first of all, I love the commercial aspect. I like the way that you guys put it up. I do have concerns. One, with what we're looking at right here on the screen, with that internal traffic relief, I would agree with Mr. Kelly that that just seems a little wonky to me, that you're gonna try and move traffic around from inside the commercial, especially when you have all of your multifamily dumping out onto Greenbrier. The second thing, looking at this, that is interesting, is the cross-section that you have there of Memorial, goes well into the current fresh facility. So, the scale is either funky.
This is a cartoon, it's not at scale.
I was gonna say, because the scale guy looks wonky.
They call it a cartoon sketch, and so it is not to scale.
Okay.
That is, okay.
So, in answer to your question, first of all, the internal drive that's shown in green on this exhibit, that was actually specifically requested the last time we were here. And the idea behind that drive is not to route traffic from Greenbrier over to the frontage road, but to give the residences and the businesses access to the frontage road without having to go onto Memorial Parkway. And so, that was the intent of that connection. It's not designed to be a pass-through route. It's designed to help the development reach the frontage road without having to go to Memorial Parkway. Well, what, looking at this, I mean, it cuts out the whole east side of the development. Doesn't have, I can't see where you have access to that green internal traffic relief road, especially from the multifamily side. We could, I'd have to look at the driveways, but those, there are connections from the commercial and from the multifamily that lead to that, that allow that to, that allow that to drain. Other than through a parking lot? 'Cause it's all parking lot. Yeah, it's all parking lot, pretty much.
It is an access lane for all of the development itself.
Okay. I think that's a little undersized, personally. When it gets to, when it gets to the live-work units, I'm curious, thanks, thank you, sir. I'm curious as to, in other developments you've done with live-work units, what the success is of that? 'Cause you know as well as I know, that if you have a live-work unit reserved for that, and you're a year and a half into it, and nobody's biting on that piece of property, you're gonna lease it to whoever can rent it, right? Whether they have a business in there or not, so.
Yeah.
Touch on that, please.
Specifically, our, my experience, it's still water. The last development we did had a similar count in the City of Austin, and that was delivered back in twenty sixteen. And they were all occupied by people who were actually using them for that intended use. And now, we see even more freelance workers, people that work from home, work remote, that can use spaces like this. So, I think that there's a lot of individuals that, you know, even that we work with, that could, that are mostly remote, but need to go meet with individuals once a week, you know, a couple times a week, and they end up dragging a bunch of stuff to Starbucks, right? 'Cause that's the convenience spot to meet, and if they have a space like this, it's easy to bring people in, host. So, in our experience, they've been well-received. I think this location, you know, there's multiple things that we're accomplishing with them. You know, you do get more pedestrian traffic to and from, they're successful, especially users that maybe have multiple people coming in and out of their space per day. And then, technically, yeah, we've seen demand for them in the past.
So, what kind of users would that be?
It would be someone that's, let's just say, you have a marketing firm, right? And you've got a bunch of paper deliverables, and maybe you have someone come in, or a photographer, right? Freelance-type work, where, hey, I've got all my magazines, my portfolio, and because we went through this recently with a firm we use, a remote individual. Before we engaged them, we met with them, and they lug all this stuff to Starbucks, you meet in person, you say, great, we love your work, like seeing this stuff in person, like meeting with you, and now we're remote, right? But they run a business, and they wanna meet face-to-face, and they wanna be able to show the deliverables in person for items that they do. Or give you someone that cuts hair, you know? Like, instead of renting a salon space and a salon chair, you have a book, and you can go to people's homes and cut hair, or they can come to your home and cut hair, whatever's convenient. So that, those type of workers.
So.
Or accountants, you know, that need to meet with people occasionally, but there's a lot of.
So you're gearing these more to professional, personal services versus a retail type of thing?
And they have shown success with like e-commerce businesses, where you are, you know, e-commerce-based, but it also gives you an opportunity to have a storefront, right? So you're doing business nationwide, maybe as a small entrepreneur, but your home base is here in Fates, and it gives you an opportunity to have a storefront as part of that process.
Saturday, when the mixed-use development is, or the commercial's active, you can put, get a license for A four A sign to put in front of your place, people come in as they're going to and from the restaurants, and, you know, you're selling in person, right? Even though your focus is gonna be more of a digital storefront.
But, but more of the focus would be professional, personal services versus a retail, right? Versus, versus, I mean, I suppose you could do it, but like a boutique clothing shop or sign-in, right? Okay. I think, I think that'll, why didn't you put in more of those units? I'm curious. How'd you come up with thirteen?
Thirteen, it's spacing, right? That's the frontage, that kind of, that faces the commercial development. So, for where you're gonna have pedestrian activity, where people can park and easily public access, that's the size of units we've used in the past, it counted to thirteen. And I do think that there's a danger, to your point of overbuilding them, thirteen seemed like an adequate percentage.
And what size of retail or commercial space would be on the bottom floor for that, would you think? Thousand square feet, or what?
No, the bottom floor, so it's more about, it's more like around six hundred feet kind of dedicated as a space whenever you first walk in the unit, and they're kind of, and they're two-story units.
Sure.
So there'll be a separated living that really feels detached from your work environment. But kitchen, bathroom will be on the first floor, but it's more like six hundred feet of that first floor space dedicated.
So, the living space would actually be split between the two floors, right? With a separate, basically larger room, right?
Yeah.
In the front?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, just hang there. So, a couple of questions, I think, so one is, what is the proposed rent? Right now, I think, Michael, downtown Fates, like thirty-four dollars per square foot, thirty-six dollars per square foot, it's almost to a point.
Talking about commercial rents right now?
Yeah, commercial rents, it's really high, it's hard for a small business owner to afford those rents and make money, right? So, what's your projection on this commercial rent, and for the commercial part of this?
Horribly.
Sorry.
Some of these I would expect to be sales, right? Like, some of these would be pad sites, that would be sale. If you're talking about the rent in the actual retail space, I mean, it's gonna be market-driven, but that's not, you're in the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't know a lot of, I think my concern is, we're having a hard time filling up some of the space downtown Fates right now because of the thirty-four, thirty-five per square foot, and that concerns me adding more commercial development. Must we need, I think you're right.
I would say, what, all the retailers are going to be driven by visibility, access, parking, and signage, and this site hits all those.
Yeah, that's because I thirty, right? I thirty quarter.
Just the visibility of it there, where it is, the access, the parking, those are all important to the retailers, and these hit those notes.
And the question, have you done like analysis of what areas are missing in Fates? Or you just, it's kind of like first come, first served on the pad sites or the empty buildings?
No, we look at a tenant mix, we certainly look at a tenant mix, and we try to make sure that it's balanced. We just, that's why. We just, that's why I always note, like, we are, have a vested interest as property owners adjacent to it. And, you know, we try to balance that, and we balance, you know, what's good for the development, what's good for the community, so we certainly-
And we don't need more daycare centers right now. We got several underway, right? So, I just want to make sure that we don't have two coffee shops next to each other, things like that.
Certainly, as you go into a leasing, that's where you get into a pre-leasing effort, and there's a co-tenancy clause, clauses anywhere, they're going to want to make sure that there's not six coffee shops.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You're working through that in the, in the pre-lease process.
And you're getting a good job on Fayette Village, doing that, a nice diverse. On the traffic, so, on the traffic real quick, Fayette Village is full all day long. The parking lot, fresh shoes. So, I do agree on the three extra traffic. People come and go to work in the evening and, and the morning, but Fayette, throughout the day, Fayette Village is full, right?
Yes, it's reached the, the kind of, the threshold of, of having a daytime population that'll fulfill, fill these locations up.
Okay. I think you asked, answered this question, but I just want to make sure, your I-30, your, your I-30 frontage road and a 551, all your traffic estimates are being submitted to Tax dot, right? And they're part of the Tax dot, TIA, they've done?
You're saying that the additional commercial that we showed, yes. It was a, it was a revised TIA to account for all the square footage. So, it includes all of the commercial.
And, and I do agree with the other councilman's comments around internal traffic. Through, gets busy, trying to get through a parking lot, it's not easy to do, and the other one is landscaping. So, I know when Fayette Village first came up and Fresh, we just, we, we had to help, we had a hard, there was a period of time they didn't maintain the landscaping, right? And I think you know that. So, we went through some conversations, then that got fixed, so thank you. So, what guarantee we have that we're going to have landscaping maintained from day one? That we'll keep it up and make it look as well as does day one?
Yeah, I think that's part about certainly putting in some type of property owners association. Given that there's a big component of joint access and, and, and then also large flood area to maintain, um, you know, our intent is that there's some type of property owners association that helps to regulate those types of activities and make sure that it is overseen and addressed appropriately. And that everybody contributes appropriately.
Yeah. I'm just, I am concerned about the, the capacity of the apartments in Fayette. We have, I think, thirty-two-hundred, what, twenty-eight-hundred eventually entitled. And then, and Rockwise got over five thousand already, so. Uh, I just, and Prozess is not filling up very fast at all. They've taken a certain amount of time, so that's why, that's why I did what I did was, I really wanted the commercial first. But I don't think, right now, if Fayette starts slowing down like we think it's going to, the population grow, I'm not sure there's capacity for the apartments. Even great ones that you guys might build for us, right? So, people have to want to rent them, and given the rents, I mean, the controller released a study saying that the rents are higher aisle size against the mortgage rates, right? So, if you charge two-twenty-two, twenty-three-hundred dollars a month for rent, Prozess is really struggling to fill that, so that's what, that's my concern about the apartments. Last one is Green Parter West Phase Two, that's under construction?
Yeah, so we, we actually paved, uh, what's called Stations Ten through Nineteen last week.
Okay.
And that basically takes us out to the access road into the Tax dot right-of-way. So, we have to kind of do a little bit more coordinating with Tax dot to get their approvals on finalizing the decelerate.
So, that's why you have that gap there, that's why there's a gap there?
Yeah, so that's kind of, you know, the handoff point where their jurisdiction takes over, and
Okay.
we, we've got the approvals that we need. It just, uh, Mother Nature didn't cooperate these past few days, and that's, and that's holding things up. And then we also have to kind of go through the finalization process. We still owe you guys sidewalks, which we will be following up on as part of that. And then going through the city's closeout process and bonding process to make sure it's appropriately accepted. But that's where I was referring to probably thirty to sixty days where we should have it operational.
So, fourth quarter, the fourth quarter is a good estimate.
You'll be driving on it before Christmas.
Perfect. And the last one is, I know a lot of commercial developers go back to the CATs, in our case, our CAT, and ask for property tax relief. Right, so I know you mentioned earlier that if they have alarm tax, it will be higher than sales tax, but historically in Texas, you guys will come back and ask for lower valuation, then that removes sales tax from the rolls, I mean, I'm sorry, property tax from the rolls. It makes them harder for us to maintain that on the multifamily where the, the commercial is, sales tax is driven, is driven by demand, right? Right, so, I just wonder, I, I know you're going to tell me no, but, you know, long-term, you probably will.
I can't tell you that the individual owners that go and buy these individual sites in the future aren't going to try to seek relief in taxes. They, they will.
Yeah.
I, we, I think the estimates that we used are based off the R-CAD and C-CAD values and the various, uh, various counties that we're operating in. I, I think Ryan's staff presentation would show the same, so those are based on current values.
Great. And the setback between the townhomes or, and the Chamberlain Crossing Homes, what's the setback?
I don't recall. Do you, Shane, know the setback? Twenty? It's a twenty-foot setback, which is within the ordinance.
Yeah, I get that. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for that. Mark, you say another question?
Yeah, real quick. Again, echoing this, I mean, you guys do realize that dumping this traffic out on that service road, those people got to go to Royce City to turn around and come back.
Well, I think it was in response to the city, you know, a portion of any of these calculations are based on some of the population working in Royce City, Greenville. That's based off calculations of traffic flow patterns that exist today, and what you could expect to see in the future as well. And so, I, I can't remember, Scott, if you, if you know what the, the traffic flows, but it was like twenty-five seventy-five, I believe. Seventy-five West, twenty-five East, I believe. I'm going off a few months' memory here, sorry.
All right, and the other, um-
So, really, it's collecting that traffic and giving the opportunity for those folks to stay off the road.
Got you. Do you have a developer already assigned to, to this commercial property? Because when, when you went through P&amp;Z, you made a comment that you did not have a developer.
We did not, we did not, but again, that's part of my commentary, is there's a number of individuals on the, we would be the master developer of the commercial piece. The individual sites that we've added, those would be owned and operated by other individual un, uh, developers or operators that have shown interest. And then if you're referring to the, kind of, call it the forty-seven-thousand square foot space that we do not have yet.
Okay. And my last statement would be, uh, the commercial does interest me. The, the commercial that doesn't make sales tax does not interest me. And right now, we seem to get a lot of those that just collect property tax without sales tax. Dealerships, daycares, storage buildings, things like that, that we are not able to, to grow our sales tax base. So, those are the kind of businesses that, that I would like to see here, the ones that will grow our sales tax base as well, not just property tax. But that's, uh, that's me, so, all right, that's it, thanks.
All right, thanks, Mark.
I'll comment that there's probably a number that are in the pipeline that fit in the category that you prefer.
We have heard from one broker on one of these sites, for the commercial, that's a sales tax user.
Okay, Lance?
Producer.
Two, two questions. The townhomes, for lease or purchase?
They, they would be for lease as part of the development.
As, as part of that multifamily?
It's all within the, the one residential development itself, it would be part of a rental community.
Okay. So, your thought process on phasing in, what phase, what phase comes first? Are you guys going to work on the commercial along, along the service road? Are you going to do the commercial along Memorial? Or are you going to build your apartments right up front?
Uh, I think there's a number of interested commercial developers for the properties along the frontage. I think those would go on concurrently. And then there's a pretty extensive planning process, like, on the architectural and civil side of what would be expected on the residential. So, it, it would be some commercial in advance, some residential. And then, as I referred to, the, the, the big kind of residential, or retail piece would, um, have some pre-leasing effort that would, that would take time before it, it occurred. It, just similar to Fayette Village, you know, I think we got approvals in, on the PD in that, in, in twenty twenty, and, you know, it was opening then, um, in twenty twenty-two. I think it was twenty nineteen, actually, we got PD, and then twenty twenty-two for opening.
Good, so when, what is your timeline for having this totally developed? Ten years?
I mean, it's demand-driven.
Sure.
Sure.
But you gotta have some kind of-
Right, I mean, I think if you take a look at this site here at the, at the end, that might, might be a few longer years now, just given access and availability to it than some of the stuff that's more readily available in the near term, in the next couple of years.
So, you would be well on, well on the way of having this completely done within three to five?
Five.
Five. Thank you.
I think you would say there's a critical mass, that it was delivered what you're thinking in five years.
Okay, it's, it, because, you know, on, on the, uh, property on the north side of I-30, they were, they were saying, like, they were expecting a fifteen-year build-out, right? On, on the two-hundred-and-sixty-eight acres.
Multiple sizes.
Sure, yeah, but, but on, on this forty-nine acres, you're, you're looking at five years then-ish.
I, I think the commercial traffic that's on the I-30 side, there's general interest now once entitlements are received, and they know they're not spinning their wheels on diligence on their side and going through their internal processes. There's general interest, there's a little bit of time to getting the, the kind of pre-leasing efforts done on the, on the retail commercial space in the southwest corner. And then the residential piece is, you know, what would you say stabilization was twenty twenty?
Stabilization, I think we, I mean, we, we would assume effectively a, a year to design it, especially with the development agreement, it's just going to be kind of more extensive review. So, a year for design and permitting, approximately two years to build it. So, you're starting in twenty-five, building twenty-seven, you're leased up in, at the end of twenty-eight. So, that one's, call it, four years from today. So, right in the middle of the early commercial, you know, you'd have this commercial move faster, beyond construction a year. First units available in twenty-seven, hopefully, would be a pretty difficult timeline.
Lance, I was here one year ago, September of twenty twenty-three, for an entitled Whataburger. An entitled Whataburger. And we're in September of twenty twenty-four, and we're just got the permit.
Okay, I, I get that the, I get that these are estimates, but in order for your financial calculations to work, you've got to put in some kind of planning horizon, right? And if you're saying three to five years, and I, I can live with that, understanding that it is market-driven, and it may stall, or it may accelerate, right?
Yeah.
More than likely, it'll stall, that, given the economy and the way it works. One question, I think, more towards Ryan, in the PD, do we have any kind of specific phasing in that we did, like, similar to Lafayette? We don't. Okay, thank you.
Cody, you had a question?
Hi, um, there's a section of this development that is going to back up to Chamberlain Crossing, the reserves. Previously, and I believe y'all were the owner of the prose, or that was y'all's development?
It was our land previously.
Okay, gotcha. So, when we did those apartments there, um, there's a lot of complaints about the people that live behind the prose. I want to know what landscaping and things of that nature you're planning on putting in between y'all's, I don't know if it's townhomes or apartments right there, but that portion that is going to back up specifically to the reserves, what are y'all doing to create privacy for those homeowners that are right there?
Yeah, so there's an existing retaining wall with a six-foot fence added to it. And then there is a number of trees that exist, but also a number of trees that are being added, correct? As far as, what is the spacing on those? Every thirty foot on center, uh, there'd be large canopy trees being added. Plus, there's a, a, a pretty, um, established number of trees there along that fence line.
Okay, and y'all don't plan on taking those trees down?
It's also two-story townhomes that are along that fence line, so it would be-
So, it's not exactly the same, I just want to-
Exactly the same.
Okay. And as far as the live-work space, do y'all know currently, like, in this area, is that working in this area? Do y'all have other, you know, examples? Or what is the cost that y'all associate with that as far as rent for those? How does that work?
Yeah, specifically in, in this sub-market, I'm not aware of it existing. So, I, I don't know specifically for this area how well it's working. And then, for the, the rental rates, they are bigger units, right? Because they're two-story.
Okay.
They're two levels, so I think some of that naturally self, well, we would think would self-regulate, or we've seen self-regulate, because it doesn't make sense to, to pay for the additional space that's specifically designed to be accessed by public right-of-way. That kind of opens up onto this larger, kind of expanded sidewalk, pedestrian sidewalk. Because they are a premium, just because they're larger square footage. But I think that those, I mean, I think we've estimated that their rents would be twenty-one-hundred dollars, you know, in a, a month, and the, in the individual one-bedroom, it's a one-bedroom, would be significantly less. So, if you're not, if you don't need the space for that use, it is a premium, so it's, it's kind of, why would you rent it?
Yeah. Who's, would that be y'all's job to advertise for something like that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's not something that we see here, so I don't think, you know, as far as the public goes that lives in this area, I don't know that they're familiar at all with a live-work, you know, space like that.
Yeah, we would be responsible for advertising. And, and to the point, I don't know if any of this has been built, but live-work units are specifically contemplated in the city's comprehensive plan as a housing type that was wanted and desired in the city of Fayette. And we thought that they worked here very naturally. It was a natural fit for this location.
Well, there's, there's not a ton of them. My, my main issue is not the live-work, um, it's not the townhomes, it's the apartments, because, um, we have a lot of apartments already on the way. And, you know, just talking to folks, they're really not interested in adding additional apartments. I think some of the commercial stuff that y'all have looks great. My issue is mainly with the apartment, so, thank you.
All right, I think that's it for the questions. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Ryan, you want to come up, answer questions, or you have a presentation to give? How do you want, huh?
I've got a presentation.
Okay.
I'll go fly through it, hopefully, just because, uh-
That's hopefully.
All right, so I'll be giving the staff presentation for the Fayette Memorial Mixed Use Project. This is city project ID ZR twenty-four zero zero four. So, this is a zoning request, requesting a change from the current zoning designation of agriculture to a planned development in order to change, in order to develop a horizontal mixed-use project on approximately forty-nine-point-five-eight-two acres. This project would include almost a hundred and ninety-four-nine thousand square feet of commercial development along Memorial Parkway and I-30 Frontage Road, as well as, as we discussed before, thirteen live-work units, three-hundred-and-fifty-three apartments, and twenty-one townhomes. The reason that we're back here after the previous denial on December fourth, twenty twenty-three, was because that denial was specifically made without prejudice, which gave the opportunity for the developer to come back at any time with a, the same or similar project for reconsideration by council. At that denial, some of the key issues that were expressed were the proportion of commercial versus residential in the original application, anticipated traffic impacts, and, and lack of interior circulation, and the apartment building design and unit count. So, again, here's the location. This pro, project would affect three currently undeveloped lots, zone agriculture and abutting Memorial Parkway, East Greenbrier, I-30, and the reserve at Chamberlain Crossing. So, this change of zoning from agriculture to planned development incorporates two sub-districts within the PD. Those are aligned with the general commercial zoning district and the neighborhood transition zone. The general commercial zoning district is based, is almost a straight zoning. There are really no cha, significant changes to the zoning district standards. The neighborhood transition-based zoning does include some adjustments in the PD. As the proportion of the total project area, the general commercial makes up about fifty-eight-point-three percent of the total area, and the neighborhood transition forty-one-point-seven. Included with the PD request, as is required by the UDO, is a concept plan, which includes a common open space area within the commercial sub-district, trails and landmarks, an amenities center and amenities throughout the residential sub-district, and a pedestrian-oriented street that separates the live-work unit, multifamily, and the commercial development facing Memorial Parkway. the live-work unit multifamily and the commercial development facing Memorial Parkway. Within the general commercial sub-district, again, a hundred and forty-nine thousand square feet of commercial development among approximately fifteen buildings, with onsite parking, access for Memorial, Greenbrier, and I thirty, and anticipated mix of retail office and restaurant uses. This also includes some additional commercial development along I thirty Frontage Road and a looped trail system. And as I mentioned, as in the development agreement discussion, there is a condition of approval on this PD that would be intended to improve connectivity within that trail system. The residential sub-district consists of three hundred and fifty-three multifamily units within three-story apartment buildings, thirteen live-work un- work units facing the pedestrian-oriented street, and twenty-one townhome units along the properties' eastern boundary shared with Reserve at Chamberlain Four. Uh, the pedestrian-oriented street abuts the western side of the residential sub-district. It provides wide sidewalks and on-street parking, enhanced crosswalks, and an intentional street streetscape to replicate a typical urban street. As was mentioned before, there was a traffic impact analysis conducted. It went through three staff reviews. So we had our third-party consultants at Kimley Horn do a thorough review and comment on this TIA. And this TIA shows that at 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 build-out, so this is a hundred percent built-out, the peak hour AM trips will be three hundred and fifty, and that's between seven hundred, seven fifteen and eight fifteen AM. And at build-out in the PM, it'd be four hundred and eighty-three trips, which would be between four thirty and five thirty. I did a little bit of an additional analysis because it came up to look at the um, the total amount of a breakout between the the commercial and residential uses. So in the AM peak hour, the residential tr- traffic comprises about twenty-seven point four percent of the traffic, and the commercial is seventy-two point six. In the PM, eight, the residential is eighteen point one percent of the traffic, commercial is eighty-one point nine percent of the traffic. The total twenty-four-hour weekday, the residential comprises twenty point two percent of the traffic, and the commercial seventy-nine point eight percent of the traffic. So I just wanna make sure that that was that was clear for for everybody's benefit. In the TIA, there are some project-related recommenda- recommendations that are included as conditions of approval to this PD, which include the addition of a northbound right-turn deceleration lane at Drive I in Memorial Parkway. That's the main driveway, almost opposite the driveway at Fresh. And this would require interim lane to be constructed with the development prior to it, should that occur prior to the full build-out of the Memorial Parkway improvements. There's also an eastbound right-turn deceleration lane at Drive D, which is the main driveway off of the I thirty Frontage Road, and same thing. They would they would build that there themselves as that driveway were to be. So those three key points from that previous denial were addressed, and I won't be exhaustive in this because that was discussed earlier. They did provide this baggage road, which does replicate what was provided and discussed in the initial application. And so they show this as a kind of a more of a proactive construction timing to mitigate the early-stage traffic impacts to Memorial Parkway, particularly in advance of the widening project. The second is the increase of the commercial to residential ratio. So in the initial proposal from last year, the original commercial ra- to residential ratio was one one to two point six six. So basically, for one, for every one acre of commercial, there was two point six six acres acres of residential. In this new proposal, it provides one point four acres of commercial to every one acre of residential. So that's actually a two hundred and seventeen percent increase in the commercial square. It represents a two hundred and seventeen percent increase in the commercial square footage within the project. So that's a building square footage. So in the original application, there were about forty-seven thousand square feet of commercial shown. Now we're at a hundred and forty-nine thousand. And then the other way of looking at this ratio is the total square feet of commercial per residential unit. So in the original application, there were a hundred and twenty-one point four square feet of commercial for every residential unit proposed. In this new application, there are three hundred and eighty-four point nine square feet for every unit of residential use within the proposed project. Third, the multifamily design. Uh, they provided a revised apartment design, as shown in your exhibits, in your applic- in the application packet. They changed the facade of the apartments along Greenbrier Road to match the live-work building. Previously, it had a peaked roof, which is was in stark contrast to the flat-roofed live-work building, and so now there's a more uniform apartment design. There's a condition of approval that reinforces the requirement to have the front building facade of that building three. That's in the in the top right image, it's the building on the right, to face Greenbrier, so you have your prominent facade facing the public street. And then the development agreement was intended to contractualize those building materials that could not be in the PD. So the approval criteria for a zoning request, uh, there are three in the Unified Development Ordinance. First is that the zoning request complements and follows the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. In the comp plan, as you can see in the image on the right, there are two uh, character areas of dynamic neighborhood in support of commercial. The represented zoning districts respectively are neighborhood transition and general commercial. So the proposed zoning districts reflected in the PD match the comprehensive plan land use designations. There, of course, is a reconfiguration between the two, but the total area between each reflects a a less than five percent difference between the area shown in the future land use plan and the zoning sub-district in the PD. There are also a number of action items in the in the comprehensive plan that are being met with this application. First is the distinctive identity one point one, which directs the city to allow for attached single-family townhomes and other lifestyle housing within the dynamic neighborhood place type. Housing choice one point four calls us to ensure appropriate transitions or buffers between residential areas and other uses. As shown in the image on the right, Fayette Village is reflected in red, and the neighborhood commercial zone property on the south side of Greenbrier is pink. With the proposed sub-districts shown in the PD concept plan, you would find immediately opposite of the Fayette Village commercial would be the general commercial sub-area part of the PD. Moving to the southwest, southeast, you would see the hi- higher-density residential uses of the apartments and the townhomes. And then moving further east, it would transition into the existing Reserve at Chamberlain Crossing. So what we find is that there's a transition and buffer between the higher-intensity commercial uses along the main roadways and the existing residential uses to the east. There's also economic opportunity two point one, which supports, which asks us to support development that maximizes complete community principles, which is a community where residents can live, work, shop, and play within the city limits. And the mix of uses is intended to support that use, or support that goal. The second criterion is the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So as we know, I thirty is to the north, Fayette Village is to the west, Reserve at Chamberlain to the east, and there's neighborhood commercial and vacant land to the south. And so basically, where they placed the sub-districts is adjacent to somewhat similar uses. So you don't have commercial-abutting, a large majority of that residential use to the east. You have it up on the highway and a and higher-access roads within the city's network. Moving over to the concept plan, there are a number of criteria that staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at to determine compatibility. First is whether the concept plan supports goals of the comprehensive plan. The dynamic neighborhood and supportive commercial use types are essentially supported in the respective sub-districts and the building layout shown in the concept plan. Also, whether it supports the specific zoning district purpose. The general commercial zoning district is intended to provide sites for community and regional retail shopping. And neighborhood transition is just is intended to support development compatible with mixed use, where a mix of uses in a denser and more walkable setting is appropriate. The second cri- the next criterion is kind of long, but essentially, it's intended to evaluate whether there's a substantial benefit that incorporates creative site design and an improvement in quality over what you would generally find with a straight zoning case, which can include improvements in open space, environmental protection, tree preservation, and a mix of uses or innovative housing types. And so, again, comprehensive plan strategy DI one point one calls for missing middle and lifestyle housing. This provides a mix of housing types, including live-work apartments and townhomes. There's interconnectivity with the existing street network and current and future commercial development. There's preservation of existing trees where possible, and Mr. Harper asked about the number of trees that were removed. I did a quick count, which was difficult when I was trying to also pay attention to the questions. But it shows seventy-nine trees being removed that are of a protected class, meaning they're over a certain diameter of at breast height, which among all those trees, a great majority of those are eastern red cedar, which some people consider trash trees. We do not, you know, we don't designate them as such, but those are only where you have to, um, they're providing for trails or parking areas or buildings. And so there isn't wholesale removal of tree stands, especially they're they're retained within the riparian area of the floodplain. And again, in addition to the regional trail system. The third criterion is whether the developments have appropriate transitions to the surrounding area. As we discussed before, there's a transition from the single-family detached within Reserve at Chamberlain to the Fayette Village Commercial District among various kind of transect of increasingly intensive uses from the medium and high higher-density residential uses to the higher-intensity commercial uses along Memorial Parkway. The PD states that there will be full architectural treatment maintained on all facades of all buildings. And there's a TIA that recommends right-turn lanes at Memorial and I thirty. Our condition of approval recommendation requires inclusion of those of those features into the design that would come subsequent to an approval, should that occur. And again, there are buffers against the existing single-family res- residential uses. That includes that six-foot fence, plus the retaining wall, which is about two feet tall, and then thirty-foot spacing on canopy trees, which are, I believe, intended to be six feet, I'm sorry, six inches at planting. So they're larger trees as they're planted, and they're not gonna be the spindly little three-inch trees that take twenty years to show anything. Next is that the streets within the developments shall provide adequate internal circulation. So not only do they provide a pedestrian-oriented street, which is required within these kind of mixed-use environments, we have that over in Fayette Village. That will be replicated over here. It adds to the public trail system. There's a road and pedestrian network without, throughout the project. The ride-in, ride-out driveways on Memorial, and then, of course, the baggage road reflected in this, in the green in the image on the right. In total, there are eight points of access to the site from public streets. Next is that streets shall create a pleasant walking and biking environment. There's on-street and off-street parking where appropriate. The pedestrian-oriented street is geared toward pedestrians. There's a transition to the existing sidewalk on Greenbrier and a future sidewalk on Memorial and I thirty Frontage. And then, again, the internal regional trail system connects existing single-family neighborhoods to the future commercial development within the project. Items six and seven don't apply, so I'm just gonna skip those. Item eight is that it needs to provide common open space per the requirements of the zoning district standards. So Matt stated that the percentage of open space was twenty-two percent, and maybe I misheard him, but actually, our calculation is that it's thirty-two percent of the total site. If you count like the existing floodplain, which needs to be preserved. The standard in our zoning just in our zoning code is ten percent, so there's an excess of open space compared to what we would require. And again, there's tree preservation shown where where possible, given the need to construct certain features. So as this is a zoning zoning request, there was a public notice made. Not only was it published in the local newspaper, as is required by state law and local code, we also sent a mailed notice to all properties within two hundred feet of the subject property. That's reflected on this map here. Of course, because the applicant requested a delay in the in the presentation tonight in the public hearing, we sent new notices. So the the new dates were reflected in the mailed notices subsequent to the applicant's initial request to postpone. So we sent sixty-three mailed notices to all those properties within two hundred feet. As of three twenty PM today, we received one written notice, and that was in favor of the project. Subsequent to that, however, there was a a resident who wanted to submit a notice, but we had already pulled the notice from our our website, because there's, we need time to actually compile and prepare the presentation and get it in before the the meeting. But the city secretary received that. It's it's being added to the record, and it's in opposition of the um, of the proposal.
So it'd be sixty-three, one and one, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The fiscal analysis conducted for this reflects the additional commercial that that is proposed here. And so at build-out, the total taxable value, based on information that we received from the applicant, is approximately one hundred and thirty-six point seven million. The total taxable sales, based on our estimate of um, of the total square footage of of commercial and a a conservative estimate of three hundred dollars per square foot of taxable sales per year, is thirty-five point seven million, which translates into approximately five hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet. I'm sorry, sorry, dollars of of sales tax revenue at full build-out. Based on our calculation, which may be different, it's kind of pro forma level than what the the applicant may be looking at. The total annual tax contribution, including sales and property taxes, is about eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we have two different methodologies that we continuously use when we're conducting fiscal analysis. One is based on a per-unit cost to serve, and one is a proportional area cost to serve. I'm gonna look at the latter, just because it's a little bit more of a modern and current and accurate way of looking at it. The net value per acre for this project is two point seven four million dollars per acre. The revenue-to-cost ratio, when not factoring in public roads, is seven point one to one, which means that we expect to receive seven dollars and ten cents for every dollar spent to serve that project, whether that be DPS, general administrative services, anything that comes out of our general fund. Counting in the replacement and maintenance costs of those public roads that are our responsibility, which would be Greenbrier Road in this case, it's six point six to one. The private-to-public ratio is three hundred and ninety-nine point two to one, meaning that there are three hundred and ninety-nine point two dollars of private value generated in this project for every dollar of public infrastructure liability created through the through the the public roadway and public network. And the years to repay the public liabilities in this case would be two. Back in July, the Planning and Zoning Commission evaluated this project, and following a public hearing, made a recommendation to council to approve the project with certain conditions. They are as follows. Condition number one is that the thirty-foot maximum front yard setback for the general commercial sub-district, as listed in the site data summary table on sheet two of six of the concept plan, shall be removed. The maximum front yard setback shall follow the standards listed in the development regulations portion of the plan development. Staff had just observed a minor discrepancy between the two, and so we wanted to defer to the actual PD language. Number two is that note three on the concept plan needs to read that all fire lanes shall be no less than twenty-four feet wide and shall have thirty-foot minimum turn rate DI. Sheet, uh, condition three is that the front facade for building three shall face Greenbrier Road. Condition four is that utility shall be subjected civil plan review and approval. Approval of this concept plan shall not constitute approval of the civil design. Condition five is that landscape screen requirements, table on sheet L zero point zero one, shall match the screening requirements of the development regulations in the PD. Condition six is that all project-related recommendations from the TIA need to be incorporated into the design of the project. Text dot permit shall be obtained prior to any construction in the text dot right-of-way. Both of the deceleration lanes are in text dot right-of-way, so there will be coordination with text dot. Condition seven, this was actually an addition, added condition from the Planning and Zoning Commission, is that the trail east of the twenty-one townhome unit shall be connected to the proposed eight-foot-wide trail to the north by way of a gated entrance. Efforts shall be made to minimize impacts to existing protected trees. P N Z thought this would be an easy opportunity to improve circulation among the trail system by connecting these two points. There's a mature cobs of trees there, which is probably why they didn't propose it in the first place, but P N Z thought it would be important to make that connection. And finally, the building design standards listed in section C two C of the development regulations shall be removed from the ordinance, and said regulations shall be inserted into a development agreement for the project. Again, HB twenty-four thirty-nine prohibits incorporation of building material standards in any ordinance, and so this makes sure that that would not occur. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any additional questions you may have at next time.
May I ask any questions?
Oh, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
So the plan development document that I see or have seen, to me, seems woefully lacking in a lot of specifics and some of the things that I feel that in the past, the ambiguity has led to multiple changes, especially when it gets around prose apartments. I would I would really like to see pictures embedded into this document that says, this is what we are going to build, this is what we presented, and this is what's gonna be there, instead of what happened at prose, where we were given one set of documents and led to believe that that's what was gonna be built, and now it's totally, totally different than what was presented upfront. So I think that I think this document needs to to go back and go through the same kind of process that we went through on Lafayette. and go through the same kind of process that we went through on Lafayette Crossings. We need to have performance, performance measurements put in there, phasing put in there, and what's going to be built first and when, and those kinds of things.
I just have one question, Ryan.
We had a streak going there.
Bust of the streak. They're going to be adding a six-foot fence on top of the wall that's existing at, at Chamberlain. Who's going to be?
There's an existing six-foot fence there behind the residence.
Oh, they're not adding the six-foot fence?
No.
So, uh, is that now going to be shared with the people who are going to be sharing that fence as well? The, the cost of that replacement of the fence?
Not generally. It's, the fence is built on the property of the residences. So it's a hundred percent on their property, and so it's not on the property line. It's on their property. So they would be responsible for those fences. If there were damage or vandalism or something, uh, you know, that would be a civil matter. But it, it, there's no, nothing in the development agreement or probably any C C and R's that would obligate the users of the multifamily. And if, if Logan or Matt have something in conflict with that, I would expect that the residential users would be responsible for those fences.
So then there's a plan to put a fence between, there's, I guess I need to understand, is the back of those townhomes going to back up to the back of the?
No. The townhomes, the front of the townhomes are facing that fence. There's a approximately fifteen-foot space between the front of the townhome and the retaining wall with the fence. Within that fifteen-foot space, there's an eight-foot sidewalk that provides access to each of those residential units. There's also a row of six-inch diameter trees that are thirty-foot spacing that provide more of a visual buffer because the townhomes are two stories. And so that's what's within that space.
Okay.
There's no second fence because we, we get this all the time where there's an existing residential development fences, and there's a requirement for a commercial development to build a fence. And then, I mean, that's what actually happened at Pro's where there are two fences right next to each other and just.
I, I just making sure that's not what we are going down that same path again. All right.
We, we've hopefully learned our lesson with that.
Hopefully. Cody?
Okay, so I'm new here, and I'm still trying to find out, I guess, how the previous vote for making it commercial only.
We have to have a commercial. Let's have the public hearing first, then we have that conversation.
I just, and there, there's a reason why I'm asking is because I don't know. I want to make sure that I understand correctly how I'm voting, right? And so for this, for the zoning change.
So when we get to a public hearing, then we'll have that conversation. You ask more questions at the time you want. I will ask more questions at the time. But let's get to the public hearing and then go forward. Okay? Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Open the public hearing app at eight oh one. Vicki, how many people we have?
I have two people that want to speak.
Okay.
First person being Rodney Brumlow, address one oh two Jeremy Drive.
Lauren, you can't. Three for three tonight. Three for three.
Rod Brumlow, one oh two Jeremy Drive.
Welcome.
You know, one of the first comments made was, uh, quality with, uh, multi-use facility. They don't go together. Fate needs retail in here before we bring any more apartments, mixed-use housing. You know, when's the developers going to understand? We've got to build Fate before we can trash it. And they're trashing with more houses. You know, let's get retail in here and build it. Uh, that's what we need. We don't need more apartments. You know, uh, you know, I'm asking this project be denied again, turned down, unless they come in here and they develop retail first. You know, they're throwing a game in there, calling it commercial. And there's a couple of comments, retail, commercial. Which is it? You know, commercial, retail, is it going to be Steakhouse, Ace Hardwares? You know, what kind of retail are we going to get? What kind of commercial are we going to get? You know, quit mixing it, multi-mixing it, spending a lot of time on, uh, trails. You know, I wish we'd spend that much effort and time on getting retail in here as we do walk, walking paths and trails in this town. It's ridiculous. You know, uh, strong towns, you know, like I've said before, it's a Marxist Communist, uh, program. And that's what their program's following is strong towns, uh, high-density. You know, we've got enough apartments. We need retail. Thank you.
Next, please. Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it.
Next is Patty Matledge, address two sixty-seven Callahan Drive.
I wasn't planning on speaking until anybody spoke.
Welcome.
Patty Matledge, two six seven Calligan Drive, Fate, Texas. Number one, we've been through this several times with the Hunt group. And, uh, the pictures that I've seen tonight are basically the same thing we saw the last time that, that they were here as far as what the apartments are going to look like, the little loving little area where people can shop and whatever. But they said that those shops are going to be six hundred square feet. That's going to be the work area. Six hundred square feet is not very big. I think my first apartment was about six hundred square feet. I barely had room for myself and my dog. So, uh, I don't know how we're going to do the live, work, and play and enjoy the big dining experience in a six hundred square foot building. So to me, that's just totally no use. Who's going to use it? And big thing, since I happen to live in Chamberlain Crossing, several years ago, when we came up against this, there's, was a group here from Chamberlain packed out. You don't see that tonight, and, um, I don't want to say, but they're still saying the same thing. They're going to hook up a trail, from what I understand, that will go on walking trail right into our neighborhood. I am dead set against that. I pay H O A dues. Our dues are going up yearly. I don't want someone walking from apartments up the streets, their kids, throwing trash or whatever in my yard, tearing up things in our pool, around anything in our house. I mean, we're already having more problems with robberies, car break-ins already. And I don't want any more. And I sure don't want access to people to be able to just walk in and do what we want. And we can't afford to become gated. So my suggestion to them is if this thing has to go through and we just need to add to our twenty-five hundred already approved apartments, we need to add three hundred and sixty-three more than dag gum, put a fence around it and keep them there. I'm not going to pay H O A dues for people to mess up my area. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. Lauren, the next one, something?
Lauren Megasi, address one 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 Mustang Drive.
Lauren Megasi, one 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 Mustang Drive. I'm going to come at it at a different angle here. So I love what Lance was saying. I was here when the first entitlement over by the water tower was put in. What developers do is they come in here, they get things entitled, then they sell them, and then they find loopholes, and you get what we got right now. Without something put into a planned development to lock it in, you're going to get the same thing. City got messed over last time. Don't let it happen again. I'm not totally opposed to apartments, but when it's open, P D, we thought we had something locked down. Lawyers are very good. They can find loopholes. If it's not put into the planned development, we will have the same thing happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Is that it, Vicki?
Yes, and then I have twenty-nine people that did not want to speak but are in opposition of this item.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. I'm closing the public hearing at eight oh seven P M. All right, Cynthia, what are our options we have now? Since we have a P D with commercial only, do we table this once we come back? Or we can vote on it? We can vote it down? We can vote it, approve it? So what's the option we have right now?
I would defer to, to the, um, planning director, but I can answer the question. The, the options are approve, deny. You can also, because this is a legislative decision, the council can approve this planned development with, with amendments. I wouldn't call them conditions. I would say with amendments where you're changing things. Um, so that's.
So we could, we, so we approve the zoning as, as we approve the commercial sub-district, but deny the residential sub-district?
That, that's, that's a legislative decision of the council. Um, the zoning is tied to property. So we would have to make sure we knew the legal description of the property that's being rezoned in order to.
And that would be twenty, that would be twenty-eight, whatever acres, twenty-eight point nine acres, correct?
Yeah, there's a, you'll notice in your, in your packet, there's a legal description. That's attached to the zoning.
Right.
Ordinance. So that's the property that's identified to be rezoned.
Right.
So we'd need that information.
Okay, got it.
And then for a planned development, um, you generally have, um, development standards. Those, um, if the council wanted to change them, because it is a legislative decision. The applicant has proposed this is what they want to do, but the council can change those. And I, I would consider them, you're just amending it. You're not approving that with conditions. So you can change those.
Right. Okay, so we already changed the P D, and when staff's going to come back with a new P D with new standards on the P D, and then we decided to do the commercial only and deny the residential sub-district, then, then we would have, then we have to go through the process and, you know, fix the legal description and all that stuff, right?
Ma- mayor, I think the, the, um, it would be more that you're approving a planned development with the, um, the general G C. Is that what it is?
All right, is that correct?
That's what it is, and not necessarily denying the, your, your, the action would be, you're approving the, the application for a planned development, and here's, here's what, what is basically the underlying uses are allowed, which is G C and then any other development standards.
And then, then the residential portion would be just unzoned and, and keep zone as agriculture, correct?
Yes.
And then they would have to come back through the whole process again?
Yes.
Okay. Cody, answer your question.
There are pieces, though, the G C and the P D is different from the G C in the straight zoning.
Well, we'll have to figure that out. I mean, that's your challenge. Cody, any more question around that? Got it. Any more discussions? I'll list, any more discussion, count them, more questions for Ryan?
Well, real quick, what happened to the, uh, the unzoned portion of it?
It was the agriculture for.
Do they come back or?
They can come back when they want to. In a year. Well, this time it'd be a year, yeah, the unzoned part. All right. Any more questions?
I had a question for Ryan. Is I, is I glance at the ordinance that I'm reading tonight? What I'm seeing is the zoning basi- basically marking the territory for all forty-nine acres. Is there enough in what we've got tonight that defines breaking out what is commercial versus neighborhood transition? That's, that's already been defined in the ordinance?
Yeah, there's, um, there's a figure in the zoning exhibit. Let me get to it.
I think it talks about acreage amounts, but I don't think there are.
Yeah, exhibit A is the total acreage of the property.
At twenty-nine point oh, right.
It's, it states the acreage, but you need an actual legal description of the area being zoned. And, and there needs to be a meets and bounds to appropriately delineate where that is. Now, all of the exhibits in the zoning request show a delineation, but I don't see an actual meets and bounds description of the general commercial sub-district. So, uh, that's probably something that we would need to have, uh, established so that we could accurately describe the property being requested to be rezoned. Um, or it's, I'm thinking out loud on the fly here because I'm, you know, um, if you wanted to just replace the neighborhood transition sub-district with an agricultural sub-district, that way you're still kind of staying within the original footprint of the zoning request. Maybe that's how you could do it rather than cutting out just a portion of it. I mean, um, if, if you're insist, if you need to make a decision tonight, then maybe that's what you would do rather than.
Right. So the memo, the memo would be, we approve the general, the G C, the general commercial sub-district zoning, right? And then we would re, keep the residential zoning as agriculture.
The neighborhood transition. That neighborhood transition is the sub-district that incorporates all the residential uses.
Including the apartments.
Yes.
Okay, neighborhood, neighborhood transition. And what's the zoning case number again? I don't see it on here.
Z R twenty-four zero zero four, I believe.
Oh, thank you. All right.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor, um, when I was going through the options, I wasn't sure. I identified another option. What would be to, um, because you've held the public hearing, you've satisfied state law. You could, um, postpone action on this item until the next meeting and direct staff to amend the, um, planned development ordinance so that, um, everything is all ready, um, and staff knows what's, it's expected and the council knows what's expected.
I'm not against it, but I, I do not want it to happen at all. There's a back-dooring, no offense, you guys. Back-dooring to come back with the exact same zoning, we do this again. So I think the first motion was clear. We like the commercial development. We have concern around the nev- neighborhood transition portion of it. If we table it, I want to make sure they come back only with a commercial. That's it.
Yeah, it would be, um, the staff revising the ordinance to be consistent with the direction that you're given tonight. And it would just be on the next council agenda.
Okay, but only with commercial?
That's right.
Okay.
With the direction that you've just, the, the comments that you've provided.
Any objections to that? Anybody?
I mean, that, that's, that's an option. Ryan, maybe you have more suggestions?
The other thing is, okay, so in the, in the P D development regulations, there are specific development regulations that apply to the G C zone, and certain development regulations apply to the N T. Basically, you, I'm assuming you would want to just wipe out anything that applies to the N T zone. I mean, you're losing some interconnectivity. You're losing the pedestrian-oriented street.
It gives some option, right? Because by the remission, there is not a demand for apartments right now, right? So it's not like we're just taking part of it and say, let's do the commercial event, which we all agree we need. They come back later if there's an demand for apartments, when they plan and say, hey, you know, let's do something from commercial to whatever. I mean, ag or whatever, and, and they have their, have their option. Instead of just straight up denial again, we say, wait another year, try it again, it'd be the fourth time. Why don't we just do the commercial, which we all want? And if there's a future option for agriculture, and they can wait a couple of years and see how the demand pans out here. Maybe you were right, maybe we were wrong.
The way that the ordinance is written is that they can't come back with the same application within a year. If they came back with a substantially different application.
That's, I, I prefer we just do, I don't know, it's up to council.
But I'm just saying, like, that's the way the ordinance is written. So they would have that option.
But I'm, I'm not writing, this, I don't want to narrow round for, right? Just over the years, like, so I like to table an option. Counsel, any, any objections? We table it, and then we just come back with the commercial.
The other question I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
The concept plan is directly tied to the zoning district, so the zoning application. So the ordinance states that they will build in substantial conformance with the concept plan.
So the concept plan has to be changed, right?
Right. So did you want the retention of the concept plan for the general commercial sub-district as is shown? And then just basically erasing anything that's in the N T district and keeping the concept plan as your?
That would be my goal, because I think there's a really good commercial in there. I think they have good, they can, they can do some stuff there, but.
Uh, can you let the applicant make a decision?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah.
I just want, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one thing clear that if, if you carve out the N T zone, we need a development agreement specifically around the N T zone, specifically laying out exactly what is going to be delivered when they're done. I do not want to see another thing put in like Pro's.
I, I agree, but I think we do commercial only. We avoid that issue for now. Uh, but I, I agree with them on the concept plan. Yes, sir. Sorry.
The, the development is designed as an entire system, particularly the interaction between, uh, that commercial space as well as the residential, the underwriting of what can be done is based off the inclusion of that, so it won't work to just, it, it's not something that could be just bifurcated.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. All right. Want to take a motion? What, what council want to do?
I make a motion that we deny case Z R dash two four dash zero zero four.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I, I just want to say a couple of things real quick. I, I appreciate the idea of trying to get commercial approved here. I think, I, I think the commercial piece is the right piece here for where we're at today. Um, I do have concerns with the number of adding more apartments to what we have entitled already.
But we, but we really should just do the commercial. I mean, we're going, it's what's going to happen. I just know it, that's going to happen. We're going to deny this again. The last legislature is going to take away our ability to do this.
Can I finish my comments first? So, um, the, the last thing I would like to add is the reason I'm in favor for denying this is because. is because the applicant made this presentation as neighborhood transition and commercials as a whole, as is their right. When we start trying to carve that out, it, we're, what I believe, we're getting beyond what we're tasked to do. We're tasked to review their application of what they want to do, and with that combination, I don't believe it's their right development. We, we're now trying to dictate to them, you can do half of it, but not the other half. And I understand there's state concerns that we've got, that zoning may go away at some point. I get that. But our mandate now is to review what the applicant wants to do and make a decision on that, not dictate, you can have half of it and not the other half. So, I, while, while I appreciate it, and I really do, I would prefer to see all commercial in that block, but that's not what the applicant has to do. The applicant asks us to, to, to review this, and based on what they've asked to review, that's why I think a motion to deny is appropriate.
Well, we really disagree. That I think is exactly our job as council to say what we want in land development, where, how we want it, where we want it.
And that's where a couple of...
Hey, let me finish, let me finish. And that's just, we'll just agree to disagree, okay? Because that's our authority to do that, and I think the citizens want us to do that multiple times. And, and I think if we're going to deny it for the third time, you know, you're going to come back with the same plan, and we're not going to do that, we're going to do this again. Instead of just trying to do the commercial part of it, which helps our city, and we deny it all again, that will be twenty-six years without commercial development there. This is where we're heading. So, you know, we just got to, you know, what's the, all right, any more questions?
Yeah, I have another comment since I made the motion. I just heard Matt tell us that it doesn't work the way it is. I'm hoping that he takes from this what we're looking for, maybe brings back something that we actually are looking for. We, we know what we want, and that's commercial, so if he says it doesn't work, the motion denied. I, I don't want to rush into something where I feel like we're, we're trying to shove a square peg in a round hole and doing it too quickly without thinking through the whole process and the reason for my motion.
Twenty-four years now. Okay, any more comments? All right, please vote. Okay, motion passes six to one. Councilman Bemecy voting no, and that's with prejudice, Ryan, so it's a year, right? Okay, thank you. All right, next, please.
Next is Agenda Item Six C. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding ordinance number O twenty-two-four dash zero five zero, approving and adopting the budget for the City of Fayette for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-two, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
All right, so in front, this is Item Six C. So, in front of you is a statement we have to make, and then we have a roll call vote, so I will call one person at a time. Well, here, there is no electronic voting by state law. All right, I'll take a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number zeros dash two zero four, I'm sorry, zero dash two zero two four dash five, zero five zero, approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty-two-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Yeah, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to go in order with those in front of you, okay? So, we go...
Okay, well, so, is this to approve?
The budget.
This is to approve the budget? And it's the budget in its entirety? Is this the time to say that there's something in the budget that I would like to take out?
It's really late in the process to do that.
Okay.
Really late in the path.
I would just like, well, I want it on the record regardless. I think that there is five thousand dollars that we are giving to the Children's Advocacy Center, and I would like to see that taken away. The reason for that is, I don't think, based on the current outcry in the community right now with the things that are going on, I could go into detail, but we don't have time. Taxpayer money, I don't feel like it should be used for the Children's Advocacy Center right now based on the things that we have found out about some investigations into a alleged, they're all allegations, an alleged teacher at Rock YSD sexually assaulting a child, and the way that that was handled. And I also think that there's some concern within the community about the checks and balances and how that organization is handling things. I understand that, you know, Mr. Mayor, you are on that board, and you serve on that board, but I have a lot of, a lot of personal concerns, and I've heard from a lot of people within the community that have concerns as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mayor Billings votes yes. Allen? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm going to order, I'm going to order down here. I'm sorry, Allen?
Yes, on the budget.
Yes. Lance?
Yes.
Cody?
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mark Hatley?
No.
Motion passes five to two. Next, please.
Next is Agenda Item Six D. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding ordinance number O twenty-two-four dash zero five one, ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the adopted budget for the City of Fayette.
All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number zero dash two zero two four dash zero five one, ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the adopted budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty-two-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, a motion, I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mayor Billings votes, I need discussion, I'm sorry. Hearing that, Mayor Billings votes yes. Allen?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mark Hatley?
No.
Motion passes six to one. Next, please.
Agenda Item Six E. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding ordinance number O twenty-two-four dash zero five two, affixing and levying the ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-two-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, at a rate of point two five nine two four five per one hundred dollar of assessed valuation on property within the City of Fayette.
All right, I have a, have a motion, please.
I move that a property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the rate, tax rate of zero point two five nine two four five per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation, which is effectively a ten point seven eight percent increase in the tax rate.
I have a motion, I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion, a second. Mayor, any discussion? Seena, Mayor Billings votes yes. Allen?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Mark Harper?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Mark Hatley?
No.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you, next, please.
Agenda Item Six F. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding Resolution Number R twenty-two-four dash zero seven one, approving the purchasing a records management system, RMS, for police reporting records from Tyler Technologies.
Is it Chief or Michael or a combination thereof?
Yes, I can start, and Chief can back me up.
Come on, Chief.
We would typically, actually, we were talking about the order of this. We would typically do this in the consent agenda, just because y'all have been pretty good about this. It's more of a routine business item than more of a, than less of a policy item. However, we had to have the budget pass for the fiscal year twenty-five before this item, because this one, most of the work is going to be done in fiscal year twenty-five. So, it's really our kind of first purchase in fiscal year twenty-five, though we have to do it now.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, this is the approval of purchase of our records management system across the board from dispatch all the way through our property evidence program that includes our report writing and all of our incident management within our department. And so, one of the things is that we've talked about for a while is we're changing from Rockwell PD to the Sheriff's Office for dispatch services. And we, this is also an upgrade into the, we're currently using the Tyler Technologies program, but this is an upgrade into their, their latest software that the Sheriff's Department and Roy City are already on. And so, this puts us on that same platform.
Which is a good idea, by the way. All right, any questions for Chief?
Was this a line item in the budget?
It is.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, Seena, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution R twenty-two-four dash zero seven one.
I'll take a second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Please vote. I'm sorry, any discussion? Seena, vote, please. I guess there's something that... All right, motion passes seven to zero. Next, please.
Item seven, Mayor, Council, and City Manager reports.
All right, Lance?
In relation to childhood cancer, I've had a very, had a personal experience with, with a child that was ten months old that got a rare form of leukemia. And the good news is, is that that child was able to survive the cancer, but only through the work at Children's Hospital for him. So, it's important that we, we recognize the various forms of cancer, especially in children, and that it is, is not only devastating to the family involved, the family that was involved, they actually lived in the hospital with their ten-month-old baby for a year and a half, trying to beat this cancer. So, everything that we can do to bring awareness to it is a good thing, and thank you. Mark?
I would like to agree with everything that Councilman Bemecy just said. It is unconscionable for me for a child to have to go through anything even remotely close to that. And I do not have biological children. But it's, it's even worse than that for the parents. But I would like to echo that. And I'd also like to thank the, the DPS as always. I will never be up here one day where I don't thank you guys. Safe cities are not an accident. We are number six. It's the safest city in, in Texas, and that is no accident. That is due to very dedicated people, and we need to give them everything that they have. I did vote against the budget tonight, but I was very, very pleased that we, we increased the, the public safety, fire and the public safety police budget. That is very, very important. That is the most critical thing that we can do. It's constitutionally ma, you know, it's the first thing, protect, protect the people. And thank you, thank you as always.
Allen?
I'll say thank you to city staff for working through the budget process with this. I know we kind of drug it out a little bit longer than we have in the past, but, you know, hanging in there, sticking with us, and, and I think it really reflects a great direction for the city. I didn't, yeah, the, the childhood cancer, you know, had a, had a personal brush with that. Turned out to be benign, which is, thank God, but just the staff and the amount of care that they're, that they were setting up for, for what I, for what we needed in my family was, was remarkable. So, thank you.
Scott?
A couple of things. First of all, thanks to the entire staff for the work on the budget. It's a lot of work. It's a, it's a lot of time that gets put into it. So, thanks for the work and for answering all the questions. As far as childhood cancer, that's, it's close to me, it's close to home to me as well. We had my youngest daughter, when she was at Hayes Elementary, had a, one of her best friends was diagnosed with cancer in second grade. The little girl lives in the neighborhood, lived in the neighborhood. She lives in the neighborhood still. She fought cancer for about eight years, so it was a pretty brutal fight, including taking some of the most aggressive forms of chemo that a fifth-grade child should not have to take. So, 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 yeah, that, I appreciate the recognition this month, this month, but it is a constant thought, and, and kudos to all those who fight against that. Also, as it relates to the budget, I'm sure there will be a lot of talk about it being an effective tax increase. And while our effective tax rate is lowered, it is a tax increase, but it's a tax increase for the right reasons. It's a tax increase to fund the continued growth of our DPS, and that is critical for the future of our city. So, if we have to pay a little bit more for our DPS, it is, it is well-deserved, and I'll make that vote every time. It's also a, it's also a vote to help continue to invest in the upkeep and maintenance of our infrastructure and of our roads. So, so, yes, it is a tax increase. I, I understand that, and I appreciate it. I understand the vote that I just made as I, as I voted for that. I support it a hundred percent because of what the budget says about the priorities of our council.
Mark?
Yep, again, I want to echo what everyone else said about child cancer, horrible thing. Thank God, I have not had to have that in my, my life with my children, but those who, who do, I sure understand the tragedy that can bring. I also echo Councilman Kelly's words about the budget. Yes, the taxes did go up, but I think the money was spent on things that are well-needed to continue to grow this city and to make sure that we have good roads, good DPS, the additional officers and firemen that we were requesting. The other thing is, is I know during public comments, someone said that you couldn't send the council email. I don't know where that came from, but it's, please feel free to, to send me an email. If you have, if you have a concern about something that we're voting on, I'm more than happy to take your email. I think the only thing is, is that it can't be counted as part of, as part of the for or against, but I do take it into consideration as I get things in, in my email as well. Thank you.
Cody?
I'm just going to keep it short and sweet and say, don't drink and drive, don't beat your wives, and God bless Texas.
All right, so, Chief, thank you for everything you guys do. I know you had the interesting incident, Chama Crossing. I appreciate your responses and the follow-up question, I really do. Michael and staff, Ryan, thank you so much for what you guys do. Staff, Mr. Gilbert and Scott, all people do a really great job here, and they, our roads are getting fixed, and that's a really good idea. So, I really appreciate all the efforts. And then, of course, their families and the DPS families who also serve, and I like to recognize them because I spent a lot of time in the military, and my family served too. My kids have long-lasting memories of that. And finally, Allen, thanks for bringing this up for the child cancer was your idea, they have a proclamation. I do appreciate that, because he had a specific answer he mentioned, and we decided to do a more broad one, because a lot of kids in this city have cancer doing, that fight that every day. Okay, Michael?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right, Vicki's next, please.
Next is Item Eight, Executive Session. The City Council will go into closed meeting to discuss, under Texas Government Code Section 551.072, to deliberate regarding real property. One, to consider the purchase of Blackland Water Supply Corporation property located on North Ben Payne Road, and in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.074, to deliberate regarding personnel. One, city attorney.
All right, I'll take an executive session at eight thirty-five. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be taking on items discussed in executive session, so item 10, adjournment.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
No abstentions tonight?
I was hoping, Scott.
It's coming at some point.
It's coming at some point. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.